Okay, the room is on you did.
All right, like to call this regular meeting of November twenty eighth of the Syo Township Board of Trustees to order. We'll have a roll call and then please join in the pledge of allegiance.
Hathaway.
Present.
Palmer.
Present.
Flintoff. Present. For though.
Present.
Carrie. Present. Noel. Present. Riser.
Present.
All are present.
Thank you, please join in the but.
But allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under heaven, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is adoption of the agenda, there's a few changes, I'll explain two of them. K eight and K eleven, that's the land preservation commission appointments and the regional resource management authority appointments. We're pulling from the agenda, the intent is to bring those back for our regular meeting on December twelfth. And then I believe.
Sure.
Flintoff, you had a couple more?
A couple, yep. Um, K twelve, I'd like to change from possible action to discussion only. And I'd like to add two items to the agenda, one. Payment of deposit for CTS companies to start work on recabling of township hall. I would propose to add that to consent to G five. And a second item, proposed add on authorization for an administrative review, would propose to add that to new business.
So that would be. A thirteen.
Sure.
What was our again, please just?
Authorization for an administrative review, one page handout there.
Thank you, thank you. Those changes is someone prepared unless there are other. I'm sorry, cut people off, did you have something more that you want?
I would like to remove the bench, please.
Remove K ten? Why don't we just discuss it and if we, if there's, the board prefers, we can postpone it or table it at that time.
Didn't you say you wanted more advertising?
Yeah, because Bob Hyde doesn't want the. Right, or the road advisory committee.
He does not.
No, not really. He thought he had to be a liaison, but we don't have that as policy, so he would rather just stay in the planning commission.
Maybe it'd be better to remove it and discuss it next time.
Well, why don't we just deal with it when we get to it, if we need to modify the motion, we can modify the motion, I would prefer to move forward.
Why don't we just take a motion on this, on Jillian's amendment, since it sounds like there's different.
Okay, I would prefer to keep this item on the agenda, we could modify it if we need to, when we get to it, there's no need to pull the entire item from the agenda at this time.
Can I ask you, I'm inclined to allow her, if she's the rack person to postpone it, is time of the essence, like you have meetings, I want to leave you.
Been short for, since Don Nichols left when. Last January, when you done leave.
When is the next rack meeting?
On December sixth.
So it would, if the next meeting of rack, at which they will choose officers, will occur prior to our next meeting, therefore, I would like to move forward with the appointment. We can remove Bob Hyde if there's information, there's question about whether he wants to serve. But I would prefer to move forward so that we have an appointment of the other individual to serve on rack.
Is it essential to have these other individuals at this time, even if a vote is going to come up?
From other committees, no, we don't have a policy for liaisons. No, PPP does, but that's the only, it's the only committee that has it in their bylaws, but we don't have it in our bylaws. And I would like it, I would like people, I would like this advertised out to the public and get people who are really interested in roads.
And you want more discussion with, among roads committee people.
This, this is a power move to keep someone from voting on rack's appointments, on rack's officers, yes, it is.
Oh, you mean for you to appoint somebody to.
I would, I'd like to just make a motion, let's work this through democratically, motion by motion, okay?
All right, so what, so we're having a vote on Jillian's desire to, to remove this item from the agenda.
Will, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the agenda with removal of K eight, removal of K eleven with the intention, intention for those to be on the December twelfth agenda. Change K twelve to discussion, add as G five consent payment of deposit for CTS companies to start work on recabling of Syo Township Hall. Add to new businesses K thirteen authorization for administrative review and remove K ten.
Until the December.
Before the, with the intention of having it be on the December twelfth.
I'm gonna support your mo, I'm gonna second it, but can I ask a question? Can you guys just wait until you elect your new officers, till you get your whole complement of folks?
Oh. That's what we were planning on, because in November is when we elect the new people and nobody's came up, you know, wanted to. So we decided we would wait until we have new members.
Okay, but so you'll just, I, I think if we, if time isn't of the essence, if there's nothing pressing, if it's not gonna jam you up, if you guys can wait till you get your full complement of, of members and then do your elections. I, I, I would support that.
Yes, yeah, right, so we have a motion, thank you.
So you're agreeing that you won't have the red, the roads advisory committee will not elect officers at its meeting on December sixth?
We were supposed to in November and we decided to table it.
They've already tabled.
And new members, which Roy Townsend's not a new member, he's already a member, he was appointed at the same time the rest of us were.
And this is a motion about adopting our agenda tonight.
All right, so we have that motion on the table, let's take a.
Um, per our rules of order, we're starting to plan with Palmer, Palmer?
Yes, to remove.
Well, no, it's for the, approve the agenda.
With all the changes discussed.
Oh.
To approve the agenda.
Flintoff, yes, for though.
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Agenda adapted, seven zero.
Okay, communications to the board of trustees, there's one. Events in the packet, that brings us to public comment. This is time for members of the public to speak for up to three minutes on any matter under the purview of the board of trustees. We go first to those who are present in the hall and then we turn to those who are participating remotely. Each person has three minutes and trustee, sir, is, okay, is there anyone present who would like to make a comment at this time?
David Reed, Syo Township. The last meeting I was here and I suggested that the defeat of the fire proposals was in part due to the lack of re, the lack of trust that Syo voters have in this board. In tonight's board packet, there's a letter from my neighbor Rebecca Green. And if you read through that and if you read through what she's saying, she really wanted to vote yes on the millage. But because she didn't trust this board to, to raise the millage incrementally as the chief requested it, she was afraid the board was gonna raise it all at once, so she voted no. So she basically enforced or reinforced what I said two weeks ago, that voters don't trust you. And why should they? You guys don't even trust yourselves. I mean, tonight, perfect example, the supervisor wanted to remove two items from the agenda, everybody said, okay, the chairman of the roads committee wanted to remove the item. And he didn't respect that, that request. That's a perfect example of how this board, the interpersonal bickering, the fiscal mismanagement, the, um, the, um. What is it, favoritism when appointing committee members and reappointing of contractors without any bid, without, without, without any bidding process? It exemplifies why the voters don't, don't trust you. You have a long, you have a hard road ahead of you because the fire department needs funding. And we need a millage, we need a, an SAD, excuse me, to support the fire department. And unless you can get the voters to trust that you will do the right thing, we're not gonna get it passed. And I fear that the only way we're gonna get the board, the voters to trust the board, is if we get a couple of new faces up there next November. So I'm, I'm really fearful that the fire department's gonna have to limp along until next, until twenty twenty five. Because I don't see how, how we can get this thing passed with this board in place. Perfect examples tonight. Thank you.
Anyone else present who would like to speak during public comment?
Thank you, everybody, first off, a couple of things, thank you for hopefully a few moments approving the consent agenda item for a new generator for township hall. One of the things I'd like to see is capital planning, I know we have our strategic planning session on Saturday, hopefully. Possibly we get some capital planning out of that because I know the generator at the end of Jackson Road that powers over our sewer water infrastructures. Getting up there in age and doesn't really have a definitive replacement plan. Also, thank you for getting competitive bids for the snow removal and also for the audit services, looking forward to seeing who submitted bids and who we ultimately are gonna go with as our audit provider, hopefully at the next meeting. I'm glad to see that Brandon's here today, he's done an excellent job his first couple of months here at the township. I've worked very closely in several matters with the previous water sewer director. Brandon is much more responsive as well as much more productive in his roles than that individual was. Thank you for the nomination of playing condition, you'll have me, I'd be honored to be on the playing condition this evening when you get to that agenda item and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Brian.
Anyone else?
Good evening. Cam Boyd, an active and informed Syo resident, Syo community newsletter. I want to thank Clerk Flintoff for K twelve, which is now no longer possible action, but standardized process to appoint members to township committees. As a Syo resident who, along with Rob Pattinson and his ninety-three-year-old mother Jo, among others, have attended ninety-nine percent of Syo board and committee meetings over the last three years. I applaud the efforts to finally put this process to paper and to a vote. A few things stand out. One, the clerk shall also notify the people who applied to or were nominated for but were not selected of the board's decision. Syo has been very lax in being professional in the last few years in this regard. Uh, number two, board of review is, uh, board of review, the supervisor is the secretary, again, be professional, please. Three, LPC terms for other six seats are three years, staggered, so three seats expire one years and three seats expire the next year. Question, why not stagger two seats each like you've written in the planning commission? Um, finally, I'm hoping for a committee handbook that outlines Open Meetings Act and guidelines for our committees to follow. As an expert witness. Uh, we've had some problems with our committees following Open Meetings Act. And, um, one of my current pet peeves is that they don't call the role for people who are absent. And I believe that that needs to be on the record and that that should be added to part of the process, thank you.
Anyone else present who would like to speak during public comment?
It's not that I would like to speak, but I really feel that I must, you know, the cats sign Syo resident long term. I can tell you, at the beginning of this year, eleven months ago, I came to this, came to the first meeting with comments to say, it's a new year, it's time for a new leaf. It's time for the board to start respecting each other, respecting the public. And so here we are, eleven months later, and most of you are very respectful, most supervisor have. In this day and age, not in the fifties, women are acceptable for speaking. Their, their voice is just as valuable as anyone else's, but you're constantly cutting people off, especially women. You cut off, Kirk Flintoff, you cut off trustee Kelly, I'm sorry, Carrie. I don't know when it's gonna stop, but you should be ashamed of yourself. Every member on this board is an equal member on this board. Trustee Carrie, if you want to have a working session, call for a working session, you don't need his permission. Call for it, any one of you can do that. I don't know why you feel that you're under the thumb for his approval on every single thing, you're not, call for a working session, do it. And supervisor Hathaway, get your act together and start treating women with respect, you have a wife and daughters, they must be so proud of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Other people who would like to make a public comment who are present? Seeing none, let's turn to those who are participating remotely.
Okay, anybody on Zoom who would like to make a public comment, please raise your hand, first up is Rob Pattinson, go ahead, Rob.
Thank you, Rob Pattinson, Syo Township, if I go over three minutes, please don't cut me off. Supervisor Hathaway, several months ago, I asked you about Jeff Harshy and Jay Holland's eligibility on the DDA. You said you would look into it, a couple of weeks ago at the DDA, you and Mr. Holland let us know he was eligible because of the office he runs in the DDA. You went on to say Jeff Harshy will remain on the DDA due to the makeup of the rules of eligibility. Jeff Harshy and Mavid owned three hundred North Z for twelve years and left it in blight that entire time. So much so that copper thieves parked in our neighborhood while stealing from the building. The thieves even stole the trail cam one of our elderly neighbors put up to catch the thieves because Mr. Harshy and Mavid refused to install any kind of security system. This group of copper thieves were a bunch of hardened crooks with long lists of offenses, if you Google the case, you will see their mug shots, they were scary. These are the people Mr. Harshy invited into our community. And then refused to do anything about getting rid of them by installing a security system that would have made the building less attractive to copper thieves. The situation escalated when one of the thieves electrocuted himself and died, that's how incompetent Mr. Harshy and Mavid were. So incompetent that someone died during their watch. Not only that, the thieves came in through the roof and Mavid never repaired or even closed the hole, resulting in so much damage, it's costing the new owners millions of dollars to get the building back into shape. Then during Mr. Harshy's tenure on the DDA, he refused to recuse himself from the discussions about widening North Z. And in fact, pushed very hard to make Syo Township residents pay the four to six million dollars that the developer is usually responsible for when their project injects increased traffic into an area. This was a proposed project that directly benefited Mavid. This is the person you think is a good fit for the DDA. That calls into question your ability to make good decisions about members of the committees you select for appointment. Tonight, you are suggesting Bob Walsh for appointment to the planning commission. Mr. Walsh is on the zoning board of appeals and the roads advisory committee as secretary for both. He is not an active participant in ea, in either committee and rarely has something to add to the discussions, granted, he is taking minutes. Two years ago, you appointed him as an interim trustee on the board of trustees. His legacy of that appointment was to do and vote as he was told, again, he didn't bring much to the table. I describe all this because the planning commission is a very important function of Syo Township government and requires significant dedication to do the job well. Mr. Walsh will be spread too thin to do a good job on three different committees and is just not the right choice. Kathleen Brandt also applied to Syo Township to be in the planning commission. No matter what you think of her, every one of you has to admit that Ms. Brandt is thorough and capable in her comments before this board. Ms. Brandt has a history that perfectly fits the needs of a planning commissioner in that she knows how to pay attention to the details and is unafraid to ask difficult questions.
Thank, thank you, Rob.
Please let me finish, I have just thirty seconds more. I attend every committee meeting via Zoom and several of them in the past couple of months have said that they need new blood to improve the committees. Ms. Brandt is the new blood the planning commission needs, Mr. Walsh is more along the lines of the good old boys network that has run Syo for a long time. We need more women involved in Syo government. Ms. Brandt is exactly the kind of person we need, helping to make Syo a more fair, clear, transparent, and enjoyable place to live. Please don't make a fast motion tonight to accept the list of potential employees, of potential appointees without a discussion first. Trustee Alec Jerome and others used to do that to help our supervisor avoid any additional nominations. And that was a key part of the dirty tricks used in years past, please don't do that again, thank you very much for the extra time.
Thank you, Rob. Anyone else wish to speak, please raise your Zoom hand. Uh, Jonathan.
Hi, thanks, and I'll go ahead and donate some of my time to Rob, I just wanna double click on what he said, further expand on, quickly expand on that idea. There have been a series of people in the past that have been appointed without any type of discussion, review, the dirty tricks. All that stuff is very accurate and so I would urge you as well, please don't just accept it, please discuss it, please find room for people like Kathy Brandt. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Any other members of the public wish to speak? Okay, I see no more Zoom hands.
Well, I'd like to respond.
Thanks, trustee.
Hey, Rob. I don't believe Bob Walsh was previously appointed to the board, I think you're thinking of Patrick McLaughlin. Not Bob Walsh.
Bob was previously considered for appointment as trustee.
Right, but he wasn't on the board.
Correct.
But I thought, I thought Rob said he was on the board, now excuse me if I, I misinterpreted, but I just wanted to be clear, Bob Welsh was never on the board.
Thank you, trustee Gold, that was my mistake, I sincerely apologize.
Okay.
Will, I had one response.
Please go ahead.
Pam, um, one, you had a question about why the LTC terms are staggered, because that does not match the pattern of all the others. It is written that way in the ordinance.
Okay. Unless there are further responses, let's move on to approval of minutes, we have one set of minutes, these are the minutes for our regular meeting, oh, excuse me, of November fourteenth. Are there any corrections to the minutes? I would move there approval. I want to make one comment before we move forward that vote. There is a. Comment from me at the bottom of page five of the minutes where I was drawing attention to trustee Noel's report and I misstated the situation with um, the current status of the EPA and Gelman site, I'm hoping that you will clarify that during our reports this evening, um, now that you're here.
I can address it, I mean, I texted you about it.
Right.
When I heard it.
You caught it right away, if you've been present, you, I'm sure you would have, you would have corrected me in the moment.
Okay, so it would be, I think, appropriate to, you know, we can't change what was said, but I do think it'd be appropriate at this moment to just state what is after it.
Okay, let me just take a look at here, refresh myself, um. The Environmental Protection Agency has not yet ranked the Gelman site as being a super fun site, that's what Will said.
I know, I, I'm wrong.
They are going through the process. And we, the Gelman site advances to the next step in the process now, at, after the most recent report that we got. So we are advancing along the pathway.
We're, we're not there yet. We're hoping that that will be the outcome, but that we're not there yet.
Yes.
So are there any other corrections? No, you already moved it, sorry, you moved approval, is there a second for approval of the minutes?
Yes.
Okay, so moved by riser, support by Noel, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, minutes are approved.
And I abstain because I was not here for this.
Oh, I don't think you have to abstain.
Yeah.
Based on attendance.
You don't, and I don't know that, yeah, I don't, I think you should go down like that.
Well, I'll prove.
You know, when we first started out, we were approving minutes from the prior board and there were a whole bunch of us who were on the board at that time, so. Um, okay, that brings us to the consent agenda with the additional item G five to, um, pay for the cabling. I would move the adoption of the consent agenda. So moved by riser.
Okay, um, maybe I missed this, but I would like to pull the purchase of a standby gas generator, that would be G two.
That's too late to do that at this point.
Well, so if we approve that, that means we approve what, a two-year or a five-year warranty, let's read it.
You wanna pause and read it and do that?
Yeah.
You can't pull it at this point.
Since we're on the topic and I just posed one question, maybe we did this, this homework, but we had the last generation, what, ten years, twenty years?
Ten years.
Ten years, do you know how many hours were on that generator?
Yeah, I'm not certain of the number of hours, but based on a discussion with the staff. It was one of the original generators, the Genrec, and everyone that has evaluated it has suggested to us that it's really not the best generator.
Yeah.
Because it was the first generation.
And we, we, we.
Yeah, I'm sure you're doing your homework, I'm, I'm not gonna second guess everybody.
If we want to discuss it, we, we can pull it, I know we typically don't, I would just, you know, we suspend the rules and pull the item on the generator.
I'm not gonna second guess our, the folks who've already done their homework, I was just asking a question, that's all, I was just trying to figure out the hours, how much we're paying per hour, so we used it for a hundred hours, we paid fifty grand, I'm just doing the math, what the cost per hour was.
Yeah, but, but that is the purpose of putting things on new business instead of consent, it's to discuss them.
And this is a big ticket item and with the last generator I had heard from.
We all got very familiar with that.
Yeah, and it seemed like after the first couple of years, it started breaking down, there was a lot of money that we put into it, so.
Okay, before we vote on the consent agenda, let's have a vote on whether to pull this item from the consent agenda. I, I, I don't. Do our rules say that anyone can pull it? At the beginning of the meeting, when we're approving the agenda, any one board member can pull an item from the consent agenda, but at this point, I think we should have a vote on whether to do so because.
Yeah, just because it's an exception to our normal practice, there's nothing in our rules that prohibits us from doing it at this point. I, I would make a motion to, um, remove G two from the consent agenda. Um, onto new business, will, I presume, at the bottom, or could we put it higher up, since Brandon is here?
Well, I'm open to that, why don't we put it?
Do we anticipate having questions for Brandon?
Well, a little bit, but it's, it's gonna take long for us to get.
So why don't we put it after the planning items at the consent agenda, or on the new business?
Okay, so we'll move G two between K three and K four.
K three and a half. Thank you. So, no objection, no objection, all right, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So the item is moved from the consent agenda, that's item G two. We're, are you ready to move the consent agenda with that change?
Just a point of order, we're spending money, oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, we just adopted the agenda, now we're gonna vote on it.
Yeah, we have to vote on the consent agenda now. So consent agenda now consists of G one, G three, G four, and the additional item G five. And do you still move the consent?
I would, I would move the consent agenda, and I, does it have to be a roll call vote since it's an expenditure?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you, that's what I, and I think.
This will be, and for clarity, it's items G one, G three, G four, and G five.
Have it, thank you. Um, trustee Noel, were you the second for the consent? Um, trustee Noel, were you the second for, uh, the consent agenda?
I was.
Okay.
I supported.
Okay. So, uh, please call the roll on the consent agenda.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes. Prizo? Harry?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Consent agenda adopted.
Okay. All right. It brings us to reports. There were no written reports. Um, are there any oral reports? There were no planning commission meeting last night, hence no report. Okay. Well, in that case, let's move on. Can I ask a question about a Gelman report, maybe last week's Gelman report, but when, when there's going to be time for public comment, when it's published in the Code of, the Code of Federal Order Relations, are you gonna let us know? So, okay.
Oh, yeah. That's a, that's a long way off.
Okay.
Probably more than a year.
There's gonna be a lot of comments.
Oh, yes. There'll be an open period for public comment. And I will let, it'll be discussed heavily.
Thank you.
And, and Kathy, just as a good public service announcement, the question I asked you earlier today for a neighbor, since this is in the news, um, when people are selling their homes, they're interested in finding the most recent well testing data. Is it accurate to say it's at the Washtenaw County Health Department website?
They can contact environmental health at Washtenaw County.
Okay.
And speak to, it's Kristen.
Swain Olford?
Yes. Um, she has access to all of the information. I can advise them that the county has the most recent information from all of the sources.
Great.
Highly. Um, Eagle also maintains it on their website that it's very difficult to access.
Thank you.
Okay. That concludes reports. Let's move to the public hearing. Um, this is a public hearing. The purpose of this public hearing is to offer an opportunity for comments on a liquor license request from the owners of Grand Maya LLC to be located at four nine seven North Zeeb. Um, the relevant documents are attached to the, uh, to the public hearing agenda item. And, um, the plant, the township's planning consultant has reviewed the application. Um, and I believe we have with us, uh, Laura Krebs, who, um, can provide further explanation. And then we also have the applicants, uh, or representatives of the applicants here, um, and you're welcome to, uh, make a comment before we open up the public here. If you choose.
I'm bringing Laura in as a panelist. Hey, Laura.
Hi, everyone. Um, let's see here. Hi. Uh, so yes, the applicant has requested a DDA liquor license for, um, the property at four nine seven, uh, North Zeeb Road, which is the former Big Boy, former Pancake House, um, just south of the Township Hall. Uh, this property is Zoned C two and, um, which is appropriate for a restaurant's use. Um, and we also have reviewed the, uh, not only the zoning, but the, um, general law ordinances and found that all the information that's required has been provided by the applicant. And I'm happy to answer any questions if, if you have any.
Um, Laura, how many liquor licenses does SIO have left?
So I, we don't have any quota licenses left, but the DDA can, um, can approve any, uh, from my understanding, any number within the DDA district if they meet our standards and are zoned properly.
So an unlimited number in the DDA district?
Yes.
Of DDA licenses, different from the quota licenses.
Yes.
And is it accurate, um, Laura or Mariah or Will, that this is the first DDA license that we've issued?
That's correct.
And so are there any, is there anything about the nature of a DDA license that is different than a quota license?
Yes, um, DDA license is a special category of license. I think it's actually technically a DDA Economic Development Zone license. The liquor, the state created this category so that municipalities that had a, uh, some kind of a economic development zone or a DDA could have additional liquor licenses beyond quota licenses. Quota licenses are, um, portable, uh, or, or relocatable or whatever. Um, so if someone had a quota license, um, they could, if they chose, um, close their business and sell that license to, uh, a nearby municipal, some, another business in a nearby municipality, which is what often happens to quota licenses. They tend to migrate to Ann Arbor uh, from surrounding communities, um, because there's always a demand for more liquor licenses in Ann Arbor. But DDA licenses are not um, relocatable. Um, they stay with the property to which they are issued. So, um, they are, that's one of the key differences between the, the different types of licenses.
Follow up question. It's, uh, I know not imminent, but you know, we've once the bonds are paid off, I think the township will have a discussion about whether we continue the DDA or not. Five years, six years. But if the DDA ceases to exist, the licenses go away, or is the, will the applicant still be entitled to the license that we issued today? I mean, I hope they would still be entitled, but I would, um, you know, and, uh, because it's not the authority granting it, right?
Correct. It's, it's a cat, well, that's one of the things that we learned. It's a category of license. It, it does not have to be approved by the DDA. In fact, it has to be approved to the degree that we're approving it, um, by the, uh, board trustees. So it's, it's a name for a kind of license issued by the State Liquor Control Commission, but it's not, it doesn't have to be approved by the DDA itself.
And so if the DDA ceases to exist, does the license remain?
I would assume so. I, I, I think that Will gave a, a very accurate and complete description of that.
Okay.
And you know, the, the township is only recommending approval of the license, and then the state issues the license, so.
Further questions before we open the public hearing? All right, let's open the public hearing at seven thirty-seven. Is there anyone present who would like to speak on this question of, uh, the township's approval of the liquor license? Please come forward. Um, during public hearings, uh, there's five minutes for, uh, comment.
One by, one of the last three, I'll give one.
And there but everybody gets five minutes on for a public hearing. Thanks, Mark.
Yeah, no worries.
My name is Pam Boyd, SIO resident, and I happen to live close enough, um, that I can see the hotel that is behind this restaurant. And I'm very excited to have this building be occupied and, um, and occupied with this particular company. Um, and I'm, and I'm going to go to my son-in-law's comment, um, to add. His name is Andrew Felkamp, and he used to live in Saline. And he, uh, he says, um, when I asked him if he wanted me to add in some of his public comments, he said just that it is exciting to get something other than fast food or Conies in the area and that we have loved, uh, Mizurape in Saline for years. And so, um, I'm, I'm hoping that you will approve this, um, this, of their liquor license. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam.
Is there anyone else present who would like to speak during public comment? I'm sorry, I didn't offer you an opportunity to, another opportunity to speak before we open the public hearing, but you can speak during the public hearing if you choose. Well, we do ask people to come forward to the table, yeah. If, if you're present. Then Mike will pick you up better, um, from, from sitting at the table.
So my name's Nancy Castro. Um, we are the owners of Grand Maya. We are looking for the approval of the liquor license as a new business for the around Ann Arbor, something new for this area. Um, Mexican restaurant, which is a little different than what's around. Um, hopefully we get the approval so we can open up, which is pretty much what we're looking for, just the approval of the liquor license. Model, remodeling is, um, little holdup with, um, some permits, but those should be coming in pretty soon. And that's pretty much it. It's pretty much what we're, uh, waiting for. And we are hoping we really get the approval. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Any further comments during public comment? Is there anyone participating remotely who would like to comment?
Uh, yes, we have, uh, three hands. First up is Jonathan Greenberg, followed by Rob Pattinson, and then Kathleen Brandt. Jonathan?
Yeah, I have a very good friend who, uh, very, very, very particular about where he eats and Mizurape is one of the few places. And we drive out there all the time for that restaurant. So I will go ahead and say, yes, let's go ahead and do this. Uh, that's my full support for whatever that's worth. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Next up, Rob Pattinson. Rob?
Thank you. Uh, we live across the street and, uh, we too are, um, looking forward to this restaurant. We have one request uh, of the owner, and that is that they be very careful with the remodeling crews that are in there and then with their garbage, once they move in. Um, with the prevailing west wind, we get a lot of garbage from across the street and our fence is the filter for our neighborhood. Um, so, um, uh, as the re, as the remodelers are in there and they're taking boxes apart and plastic, especially plastic wrap, please make sure that you have a good, um, trash system for that. And then once you move in, please make sure that your garbage system is, uh, is very tight and that you don't lose garbage and big winds that then blow across the street and get caught in our fence. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Kathleen Brandt. Kathleen Brandt. You have your Zoom hand up. Any others interested in speaking during this public hearing? Please raise your Zoom hand. Final call for Kathleen's Zoom hand. Okay, no other interested public.
All right. In that case, um, we can close the public hearing at seven forty-three. That brings us to um, new business. There is no unfinished business tonight. Um, the first item is, um, action on, or possible action on the liquor license application at four nine seven North Zeeb for Grand Maya LLC. It's, um, I'll just explain, uh, because we don't do liquor licenses very often, that um, there's a particular format that is required by the State Liquor Control Commission, and that is that, um, the governing body for the municipality.
Jessica, you didn't unmute her. Ah.
Um, just to finish that thought, that the, um, the governing body adopt a resolution. The resolution, uh, in the form required is attached.
Can we go back to Kathleen Brandt?
Sure, well, let's reopen the public hearing, um, at seven forty-four.
Yep, my mistake entirely. Go ahead, Kathleen.
Uh, thank you so much for that. That was a little frustrating. Um, I didn't anticipate what other folks were gonna say, but I will say that, um, Mizurape in Saline is my favorite Mexican restaurant in the whole area. Um, of course, I'm delighted that they would move closer in SIO Township. Um, I read the entire proposal and I fully confer with what they have suggested the atmosphere is. It's very fa- family fr- friendly. Um, during lunch, you see lots of people that obviously work in the area that come and have lunch there. You see grandparents and grandchildren. You see high school kids. Uh, it's a great place to eat and I'm really happy to see a restaurant, a sit-down restaurant of this quality at this price point in our community. Thanks so much. I fully support it.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Are there any others? Okay, then we'll reclose the public hearing at seven forty-five. Um, and our next item is item K one, the, the, uh, resolution um, of approval from the board for the liquor license application.
I move the resolution as presented.
So the, uh, the motion is to adopt the attached resolution recommending approval of a liquor license for Grand Maya located at four nine seven North Zeeb Road. Moved by Palmer, support by Flintoff. Um, is there further discussion?
So trustee Riser just pointed out to me that it might be helpful if we had the statute quoted in the resolution. So if, um, could we make a small change that we would just add that this license is issued under section five twenty-one A one B of PA five oh one of two thousand and six. That would probably be, uh, a, a good idea.
So would you add that to the resolve clause?
Yes, I would, I would add that to the result clause right after, um, so it would now read the SIO Township Board of Trustees recommends that the application from Grand Maya LLC for a DDA Class C and SDM liquor license, um, parentheses, issued under section five twenty-one A one B of PA five oh one of two thousand and six, close parentheses, to be located at blah, blah, blah.
One more time, issued under
five, section five twenty-one A. It's a little A, so, uh, one in parentheses, little B. Of PA five oh one of two thousand and six.
Thank you.
She would think trustee Riser was an attorney or something.
Or a dealer in Ann Arbor.
Then I will make that change and just email that to you tonight. Jessica.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay, with the rest of the resolve, I was reading as it.
Yes.
Okay. Um, is that, I'm assuming that's acceptable to make yourself a vote?
Yes, yes.
I would like them to add must stay open till eleven o'clock. Or Tuesdays.
Eleven thirty on Tuesdays.
Every other Tuesday.
Eight people sitting in separate booths. All right, inside joke. Um, well, with that, let's call the roll.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes. Prizo?
Yes.
Harry?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven zero.
All right.
All right, congratulations and thank you for coming to SIO.
We appreciate it.
Okay, that brings us to item K two. Um, this is SIO Retail Management, uh, the newly relocated Panera um, FSP two three zero one five Revised Final Site Plan. And we have with us, um, a representative of that business, um, if you would like to come, come forward. Uh, we also have, um, the, um, Laura, Laura Krebs from Carlisle Wortman. So Laura, why don't you speak first and then we'll turn to the representative from the applicant.
Sure, so you, you've obviously seen the, uh, Panera site plan before. Um, during construction, there was, in, the developer probably can speak to this better than I can, but there was a miscommunication about, um, the installation of the EV charging stations at that location. And this, um, revised site plan, um, relocates those four EV charging stations from the Panera site to the Meyer Outlet, uh, where they're gonna be building the third building, uh, just, uh, west of the second building, uh, retail building that's there. Um, so these, it's in, in the, the Meyer Outlet site plan is an administrative site plan that won't come to the Planning Commission and the board because of the minor nature of the changes to that site plan. So this really is just, um, approval, uh, of, uh, relocating those four EV stations. The Planning Commission recommended approval, approval with, um, several conditions. Relocating those four EV stations. The planning commission recommended approval approval with um several conditions. Um, that will be looked at during the administrative site plan of the Meyer Outlet. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Would you like to make a comment?
Yeah.
Then we'll see if there are questions for either of you.
Yeah, but Laura did a nice job, uh, you know, detailing the the proposal. My name is Jordan Chapman. I'm with uh All rig USA Development. Um, we were the developer for the Panera Bread project. Um, as Laura mentioned, uh, during the construction and the design process for the the site. There was a miscommunication when it uh came to electrical loads. Um, to make right by the situation, um, we proposed to relocate the. Two charging stations that were, I guess, two charging stations that would be for four spaces. Over to the other property that we also own, uh, and that overall center, which is the Tropical Smoothie Panda Express. Um, as we're building our third building over there. Is to install them really on the far uh west end of the site, closest to the gas station. There's a little parking field, I think about six or seven spaces there. Um, so that we could have uh the electrical vehicles charging stations still, although they won't be on the Panera Bread property. Um, I'm happy to answer any other questions as far as. You know, the the timing of uh, you know, the construction or anything else you guys may have, but I think Laura from a high level covered. You know, the proposal.
Are there questions for either? I haven't, Laura, or I'm sorry, go, I I do, but I don't wanna cut either. Others have. I know, I wanna make sure, do they do that too much? Are these going kind of in the general area where those? Uh, clothing collection bins are?
Yes, um, so.
Right, it was just like up here or dropped it from outer space or like, how do those come to be where they are?
I asked the same question. Um, I I don't have the answer for you on that. I do know that. I believe the last time I was out there, um, there, I think there was three of them, maybe when I was out there in September.
Is that your property?
Yes, we're down, we're down to one. Um. And they, you know, when the overall development that their building's up, um, we'll definitely make sure that that last one's gone. I can certainly go back to the the team and see.
Cause where I work to the east of here, no names, please, they just show up sometimes in parking lots. And I'm just curious if that's happened here, uh, at at the Meyer parking lot.
I can't, I can't say for sure. Um, I'm happy to to take your information and I can definitely.
But as a property owner, you didn't know that they just show up, right?
Yeah, I I work for the development company, so as far as the asset management side of the the business, I I really just don't have the answers.
They just showed up.
These clothing collections that go for red. They just show up. They sometimes become light, people fill stuff, they put next to it and.
We understand, yeah.
Oh, and that's, and that's the general area where. These EV chargers are going, provided the people who puts up on his property is okay with this.
The exact area, just so.
Meyer has anything to do with that, because they used to have a hook bin there too. You just, they show up. Can we get back to the?
Yeah, thanks, yes, thanks. Are there other questions?
I have a question.
Yes, please.
Um, a question on the model motion. Thank you for your work in planning commission, Laura, Mariah. Um, for your work on this. A question on the model motion um for our attorney. Is this uh model motion, who's values, they have all the specificity we would um want? Um, in particular, I know, um, we've talked about motions or CUPs related to EV chargers. I'm wondering, do we need to say anything about? When these will be installed or is that taken care of through another process?
This has been approved by me and Laura and I spoke about that exact question about the timing. And that will be part of the final. We don't need to put a date on it here.
Awesome, yeah, thank you, yep.
And I I will say that if the planning commission that came up, and that's why we recommended. That they provide a surety bond, letter of credit or other performance guarantee. So that's why there's that additional requirement in there because they. Overlooked at at the previous site.
Great, thank you.
Unless there are further questions, is someone prepared to make the model motion? I would move it. Okay. Um, and the model motion, it's a little lengthy, to allow Sial Retail Management to LLC, you wanna read it? I move that uh Sial Township allow Sial Retail Management. The second LLC to amend site plan two, three, zero, one, five. To remove the EV charging stations from the Panera Bread location as previously approved. And instead require Sial Retail Management, the second LLC, to replace the EV charging stations as recommended by the planning commission. Reflected in its nine twenty-five, twenty-three minutes with the following stipulations and conditions. One, the applicant shall install three EV charging stations at the Meyer Outlet location as depicted on the nine twenty-five, twenty-three presentation. To the planning commission. Two, at least two of the EV charging stations will be dual chargers. Three, one of the EV charging stations, stations shall be van accessible and meet ADA compliance for EV charging. Stations if possible. Four, the applicant shall provide a surety bond. Letter of credit or other performance guarantee as recommended by the Sial Township Planning Consultant and reviewed by the Sial Township Attorney. Five, the applicant shall make the best efforts to provide nearby public seating. Is there a second? Okay, so moved by risers, supported by Noel. Um, I don't see any further comments, so let's please call roll.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes, Grisso? Carrie?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Rizer?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Motion adopted, seven zero.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jordan. Thanks, Laura.
So there's one more planning item and that is Firestone CU two, three, zero, one, one. Slash PSP two, three, zero, one, seven, conditional use. Uh, Laura, if you're still with us and wanna chime in, that would be great. And we also have a representative from the applicant.
Sure, so this is a conditional use for a minor auto repair, uh, Firestone. Uh, this. Property is Zone C two, uh, auto repair is a conditional use. Um, this particular site is just west of the Culvers um on Jackson Avenue. You might remember, um, if you were a member of the board in twenty twenty, this planning, the planning commission and the board approved this conditional use in twenty twenty. And due to the time that's passed, um, and no construction or no site plan had come um for approval. Uh, we um are re- re-reviewing the conditional use permit. Um, so I'm happy to answer any other questions, um, if if you need me to.
Good evening. My name's uh Mike McPherson. I'm the civil engineer consultant with Atwell. Um, you know, thanks Laura for the for the introduction. Um. It's uh, you know, like, like Laura said, this site was um. Moving forward in twenty twenty. And it had gone through a couple steps with township, including this one. Um, and we all know what happened in twenty twenty, things got a pause there for a little bit due to uh, due to COVID and some other things. Um, so this develops re-engaging, so we're going back through the process. Um, so it's very similar to what was previously reviewed and approved. Um, you know, this is a pre-planned outlot, out in front of Lowe's, next to Culvers, uh, appropriate zoning. Um. So, um, you know, we feel that uh it definitely will meet the the conditional use requirements. Um, and um, the planning commission, uh, unanimously recommended approval. Um, on on the, on the project. Um. So we're asking for uh your consideration of this tonight and uh, obviously then if 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 we get favorable outcome, we'll. Be going on to the to the next steps, um, first through the site plan and things like that. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Other questions?
Just the. Point of what we're looking at here, we have a model motion. Um, which is different from the CUP we have attached. And so I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Mariah. We should be looking at the CUP is what we're considering for approval tonight.
So the the model motion just explains the different um findings that the. That the planning commission made, that it would be harmonious, compatible, all of that. The conditions themselves are what's on the permit. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so it's a.
Two conditions.
Yep.
Those are also part of the motion.
They're part of the motion, yes, and they're on the permit.
Okay, so to approve conditional land use, two, three, zero, one, one, that uh, reference this.
Yes, so, okay, so the, so the conditional use permit. Um, includes whatever the site plan was that was approved by the planning.
Right.
Right, and then he has these. Specific conditions. A- and again, there aren't any aids by which the EV charging stations have to be installed. But that's because it's going to be part of the, yeah, part of the site plan. Laura and I have discussed that.
Okay, great. Perfect, thanks.
Be caring.
Yeah, so. This, the conditional land use is different than a beauty, we know that, but um, who's? This, the two EV charging stations. So customers that are waiting to get their cars worked on. New tires, let's say, are going to use the EV stations. I'm just afraid that we're gonna have EV stations everywhere and they're not gonna be used. Because as trustee Grisso pointed out. Anybody at home that has an electric vehicle is going to have a charging station within their. So, again, we have a fire department that is in need of funding. And here we are with, um, I'm assuming this, the two EV charging stations are of benefit to some of the public. No.
No, no, they're not in the, they're not in the community benefit category.
Okay, so then, where does this come from? The EV charging?
They're agreeing to do it, I think.
They're just requirements that the, that the planning.
Planning commission, yes.
Put on the. Condition, because it's a conditional use. Right, so is there a list of? Is there, is this a policy somewhere?
No.
I think what she's trying to get is, what was the logic tree for having?
Why did we ask them to do this?
And many others as well, right? Because I, as you know, that's where I stand. It's like, it makes no sense to me unless there's some type of logic that I'm missing and. Maybe we're down that path and it's a, it's a bit too late. It was kind of my, also my thought pattern, but.
John?
Uh, the planning commission in support of the SCAP plan is really trying to get. Electrification of vehicles out there in the means to do it. The, that that came up, who's gonna use it? Is it gonna be a customer or is it going to be an employee? Of of uh Firestone or an employee of the Culvers or an employee of Lowe's? Or someone who's gonna be at Lowe's for a while. So it's, so it's. Those three businesses are in the same general area. Obviously, it's most convenient for Firestone employees and. Customers and Culvers alone.
So they, with these EV charging stations, do you have your? You, Mark, sorry, you.
Oh, me, I'm sorry, I forgot it, yeah. Yes, I did, yes.
So when these charging stations will be free to the public, so the businesses will be paying for the electricity or there's a car. Because.
Let's ask Mike. Who's Mike? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, so, so, yeah, typi- typically, these would be um. Owned by a electrical veh- vehicle charging, uh, also a company, basically, right? That'll install the infrastructure. And they'll charge a fee for somebody to charge their vehicle, um, that will then, you know, pay for electricity and. Whatever their, you know, upcharge for their company is, basically. So that that's how they typically work throughout.
Yeah.
Everywhere. And so those fees are just, you know, are about four times the price of what you charge at home.
Okay, and how long does it take to char- to charge?
These would be level two chargers, so these are. Five hours, six hours, something, something to that effect. For a full charge.
Employee at Lowe's that makes what, fifteen dollars an hour is going to be charging for five hours while they're working? Mike, I'm sorry, no? Okay, I'm just trying to, yeah, I don't know, I don't have an EV. But um, just all these charging stations and I'm trying to, you know, if it was free to the public and it was fast. Maybe, but gotta get people to buy them first.
Yeah, you're about five years away from all that happened, but maybe longer, but yeah.
And then by that time, I'm assuming that the charge, this is a level two, by that time, there may be a level ten. They will all have to be replaced.
There's already talking about level four chargers already, so, yeah, yeah, but I'd say, but I mean, we're way off topic. I mean, that's a whole separate thing.
Really, because this EV stuff keeps coming up and we're supposed to approve it as a condition to.
Agree, but you just, we just had just the prior, the guys, folks at Panera, we asked them to put in charge. I mean. You guys tell me, I, you guys know where I stand on the chargers. I think they don't make sense. Economically. In more practicality, but.
So could we speak about this or talk about this at the planning, strategic planning session? I mean, I don't know if I would be on the list, but I would like, we need to have a deeper conversation about all of them.
Well, there is an intent, um, at some point for the board to. Do a deeper dive into the environmental sustainability plan.
That's good.
And that's what this is really flowing from. It's uh, it's a, a part of what the planning commission has set as a goal. They've done a lot of work on this and I think there's a. There's a difference between um, community benefits that are in. Um, uh, planned unit development, that's sort of a different category of a discussion with a developer. This I I view as being more like the kinds of things planning commission. Um, has as items that it discusses with any development proposal that's coming through, because part of what the planning commissioners do. Is look at a proposal and try and figure out how, in their view, it could be improved. And so this is a site-specific improvement that's an element of the development. And that is a different kind of conversation than a community benefit that could be. Um, an off-site, an off-site.
Still doesn't make sense and the SCAP plan hasn't been approved by the board yet.
The board has, the board has taken a position, um, in generally speaking, on setting goals for um sustainability. It, um, it's, it's, that's something the board took action on. And we can um have further discussions of this, and I think that probably would be a good idea. To have further discussions of this with the planning commission when we have an opportunity to do a working session.
I have a question. Um, yeah, Mike, I have a question. So for these EV stations, um, is there any? Has there been discussion about ensuring that the signage around these stations makes it clear that they're available for any member of the public? Not just a customer of Firestone?
Um, I mean, we we can get to that and site plan for sure, but yeah, typically they are, um. There's painted markings on the pavement and there's signs, EV typical signs will be, in this case, there'll be, would be one charger. With uh, you know, plugs for two vehicles, that's for two spaces and they would have their typical signs like you would see, um. I mean, if there's specific language that the township wishes to have on them, we can certainly get to that during site plan.
What, there's apps that show where EV?
Yeah, there are apps, there's different companies, subscriptions, different, yeah.
I just wanna make sure, whatever the right way to do it is, I just wanna make sure that it's, it's clearly marked that it's available to anybody, not just customers of Firestone. And that, can I, go ahead, go ahead.
So in two years when this is outdated, who's responsible for replacing it? The EV chart, from a chart on level two to a level four or whatever, who's responsible for replacing it?
I don't think that's been considered or.
Not sure we know it.
It's just, no one, they say, the company that would, that puts in the, so like Charge America, et cetera, they're gonna want to. Put in better, you know, charging stations so that customers come and use them and they make money off of them. Just like any gas station, it's gonna attract the people that come to them.
Or demand will drive it, right?
Thank you, Laura.
Demand.
I just didn't want it to fall on the business owner, you know.
No, and and I appreciate that, um, because the. Always the newest charger, the level three charger is significantly more costly to install than a level two charger right now. But to your point, it's gonna keep growing, right? But all these different companies out there, the Charge America, Blink. All these other ones, right, that install these things. I I would think that they wanna keep their. Infrastructure probably up to date in the future, right? And it's also gonna be based on who's using it, right? Are they getting use from it? What do they think the needs are in this location, right? So they'll have that data as well, so. They'll, they'll, they'll provide what is the best use for what they're seeing at the site, I would imagine.
If someone prepared to.
Need to hear it?
I would move to approve conditional land use. Number two, three, oh, one, one, Firestone Miner Auto Repair, based on the recommendation from the planning commission. As reflected in the minutes of ten, twenty-three, twenty-three, and the finding of the site plan and related information received by the township. Meet the required standards and findings for the conditional land use. Specifically, that the following required standards and findings found in section thirty-six dash two, twenty-four of the zoning ordinance have been demonstrated by the applicant. One, will be harmonious and in accordance with the objectives and regulation of the ordinance. Two, it will be compatible with the natural environment and existing and future land uses in the vicinity. Three, that the proposed use will be served adequately by.
Three, that the proposed use will be served adequately by essential public facilities and services such as highways, streets, police and fire protection. Drainage ways, refuse disposal. Or that the person or agency is responsible for the establishment of the proposed use shall be able to provide adequately any such service. Four, that the proposed use will not be detrimental, hazardous, or disturbing to the existing or future neighboring uses, persons' property or the public welfare. Five, that the proposed use will not create additional requirements of public cost. For public facilities and services that will be detrimental to the economic welfare of the community. And six, it will be compatible with the township adopted general development plan. Further, that the following conditions recommended by the planning commission be placed on the subject conditional land use. One, that two E V charging stations at a minimum level two be installed. Three, or rather, two, a pollution prevention plan be submitted with the site plan.
Is there a second?
So moved by riser, support by Brazil.
Yes, um, Gillian just pointed out to me something I just wanna show for the record. There are three pages in this item. That are wholly unrelated to the Firestone C U P. Um, we are not. Um, considering them, there is a, a, I, I just wanna make it clear for the record. Um, there is a, a three pages related to a Honey Creek Business Park. Has had no bearing on our, uh, deliberation or decision here. So, um, it's a, a notice regarding that, and there are two maps. I just wanna be clear for the record. Um, it has nothing to do with this consideration of the C U P. It's okay, I just wanted to know.
Yes.
That they're not.
Oh.
Move forward.
Okay, don't reference those. All right, well, wherever they are, I'm not finding them, but the motion and the, uh, uh. So I can do it in the, uh, additional use permit are the relevant items. Um, and we have, uh, the motion made by riser, support by Brazil, please call a roll.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes, Brazil?
Yeah.
Terry?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Motion adopted, seven, zero.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks, guys.
Well, Brandon, you're up. This is the item that we moved from the consent agenda. Um, and, uh, we're now considering the purchase of a common standby gas generator. And Brandon, since there were some questions, perhaps you would like to explain.
Would, uh, the person that proposed to change it, um, what questions do you have about it?
Well, in the background, part of it, um, and I did read through. This is fun, um, so there's. The generator has a two, um, yeah, two-year warranty and the transfer switch has a one-year warranty. An optional five-year warranty is available for an additional three thousand two hundred, um. And from what? Steve and Rich and I believe Scott, or you don't, probably no, no Scott Martin from, from before, that the previous generator. We had a lot of issues and it seems like it happened great the day the warranty expired. So I was, um, you know, it. This is a big ticket item and we really shouldn't go without a generator, and this, this generator's for here. It's not portable.
Correct.
So there is a reference, there's something about Jackson Road in here too, but I, um, but just to be clear, this is just for this.
Just for here.
Yeah, okay. I would, I would like to see a five-year extended warranty on this ticket or big ticket item. Just so we're not paying for, you know.
Yeah, it was an option for the board to, to consider and approve if they so choose. Um, my opinion that the cost of the five-year extended warranty. The cost for labor that we currently have and parts, that this would be a good idea to move forward with. Um, I just.
Extended warranty?
Yes, to move forward with the extended warranty. I just don't want to be presumptuous and just add it in the cost. Um, so it's, it's up to you guys, but I, I would recommend it.
Question, Brandon?
Yes.
Is this the run, the water tower or no?
No, um, I think what you may be alluding to is that, um. In order for us to use SCADA in our utility room to see if the water tower is operable and, and doing what it's supposed to be doing. That it requires, uh, a standby generator when we lose power here, so that it runs. And it's a critical infrastructure thing that we need in place, um, so, uh, I think maybe that's.
And that's what that would do.
Yes, anytime the, we lost power here, the main power source, this knows to kick on automatically.
I knew there was something.
And the, the last power outage, um. End of July, I believe, that's when the generator broke down, and then when we went to rent. At first, we said, no, we don't need it. We thought because we had another one that wasn't working. So then they jacked up the price and it costs us seven thousand two hundred for that rental, which is. Double what a five-year warranty would be. Yeah.
Another thing, um, I don't know if you guys know, the, the transfer switch and docking station, so in the event. And we will maintain this, it'll be a maintenance schedule. In the event that this generator does fail. That transfer switch and docking station, instead of them having to hardwire another generator in. It just requires a plug, they'll plug in from a, a portable generator into that docking station and we'll have power. So that's what that's for, and it is required, um, when you use certain lights. Like the, certain lights are, are battery operated here, they kick on, um, through the generator. And so for safety, it is required for us to have them for this building, so that's why it was added to the vote.
I just have one more question. I just support this and I wanna note, it would be an expenditure of the ARPA funding, which is, I think, a great use. Being that this building is part of the critical infrastructure. Um, my experience working here the last four years is that we need a new generator. Um, additionally, so thank you, and I like, I like hearing, um, that you plan to have a maintenance schedule for it. Um, I support the additional warranty if that's your recommendation, um, and would just ask. That when this new generator is brought in, I assume, but wanna confirm that there'll be some consideration given. To prioritizing what parts of the building operate with the generator. That, you know, something like, you know, core I T, core elections, core SCADA. The things where, you know, Rich is, God bless him, dragging the little gas generator around in the back of his pickup truck to keep running.
Yeah, so.
Will we have an opportunity to look at that?
So currently, what we have in place is just for it to replace what's currently being powered by the generator right now.
Oh.
And so whatever that has been powering, um, whether it's the whole building or just certain parts of it.
Just parts.
That's what this would be doing at that point in time. If we.
Okay.
Want to expand the capabilities, that would be something else to look into.
And forgive my ignorance, but is that an electrical project? Like what is, what, what does that entail?
Yeah, we would have to run more electrical wires from those sources to, um, the plugin. Um, and it may, depending on, um, the output that was required, a bigger sized generator.
Yeah, I, I, I certainly don't wanna, you know, take, take us off track, but I would just ask that, you know, if this one comes in, I'm sure you'll work with. Joyce and Chris, our I T director, just to make sure as we're redoing the network, the server room and everything. That that room is powered, the kind of key.
Right, those critical areas.
Definitely.
The critical areas are powered.
Definitely.
I just, if we're gonna make this investment, I wanna make sure we're powering the most important stuff.
Sure, so.
Yeah.
To that end, just given that we're likely to allocate up to a thousand dollars.
Hundred.
Or even a hundred thousand. Could, could we leave it to the discretion? Uh, Brandon and, uh, and then, you know, township manager to get as much generator as we can get for that. If, in other words.
Absolutely, I totally trust your assessment of what capacity we need. I just wanna prioritize. Critical infrastructure, I just wanna note that currently, what gets powered when the power goes off here is not all of what is critical.
Right, I, I agree with you on that.
Thank you, okay.
And, and then I think just one other comment, uh, the company. Where we're getting the generator is highly regarded, um, the fire department have the same brand. The county has the same brand, and I think we'll see more reliability.
Great, you know, I admire the county's generator. Every day I drive by. I know, that's what I wanted to do, like run an extension board.
So, Bren, so like just two comments, obviously, you guys' judgment, just, just two thoughts and consideration. It'd be interesting to get, just to skin our level, I'd like this, just, we kinda, I don't know why we do get out of that last generation. But again, if it's, you, you don't wanna throw good money after, after bad money, if it's a defective lemon to begin with, so be it. So the only other consideration, I, I, I would say, did you get to consider? A lot, you know, they make large portable generators. I mean, they make ones that are on a trailer that power equal to or larger than that. And that way you'd have the mobility of either moving it from here or to the sewer station, to our.
Pump station.
To, yeah, to the pumping station or anywhere else you'd need it. Uh, maybe, so again, if you get a docking station, it's literally simple, you know, it's just an oversized plug. You plug the thing in and you go, is that, is that a viable?
I don't think it is due to the, the new, um, you know, ordinance that's put in place to, I mean, we, we got. A, a list of things from the fire marshal that we had to make sure that we took care of. And part of it was making sure we had a standby generator here that was permanent. In case we do lose power, the emergency exit lights and, and these lights right here do have power. So that in the event that there was some kind of emergency or people knew how to safely get out of the building. So that's why it is required to have one here onsite at all times and that extra docking station with the transfer switch. Just in case it fails, we can hook up a, a portable generator to it.
Yeah, I got, and also when they're permanent, obviously you're running off of natural gas versus gasoline too.
Right.
Which is cleaner, cheaper. Typically lower maintenance because it's less impact on the, on engines. Got, okay, that's it.
Yeah, and then the other thing, we are looking at getting a, a new generator for the pump station. Because of the age, I think that one's twenty years plus.
Yeah, yes, yeah. And Joyce, is that the one, Joyce or Brandon? I, I thought there was some consideration for that one about it potentially being a portable one, or is that off the table now?
Yeah, that was also gonna be a permanent one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Which would be required, I think, through Eagle because of the pump stations.
Upgrade.
Cold. When will this happen?
So it is currently being planned out right now for the capital improvement plan. Um, this should be something that is figured out before. Uh, budget time for you guys to look at and, uh, and approve. Um, and there's only, the talks right now is making sure we have the correct size generator. Uh, for the future, um, and that entails, uh, getting with engineers and we have been discussing with them. The size of the wet well needs to be expanded and that may cause us to, um, get bigger pumps. Which will require a bigger generator, and we're just trying to do our due diligence and make sure we get the correct size generator in there. Um, to, to move forward, so, uh, as that develops, uh, we'll be working with Joyce. And, uh, we'll eventually get that in front of you to, um, to look at.
Awesome.
So I guess, we are not, the, the model motion is for the hundred thousand dollars for the purchase of common standby gas generator. Maybe and five-year warranty, if we wanna add that, payable through ARPA funds, but we're not wedded to the a hundred and fifty. Kilowatt sixty hertz necessarily, we're, I, I, I guess, I would recommend you get us whatever you can afford. To power as much as we need to power, uh, because we're hiring people, we've got fancier computer systems. Got that new microwave, all of it, you know.
But, but I think our expectation should be just the critical infrastructure, John, I just.
No, no.
I mean, I, I agree, we should get as much generator as we can get. I just wanna manage expectations. I don't think we're, we're never gonna have this whole.
Right, because I wasn't here, I don't know exactly what it all powers, but what I can do is ask for. Turn on Electric, who actually did give us a quote for the installation. I can come out here, we can see about tracking down what is all power to the generator and what's not. And then we can figure out, okay, this is critical, let's add it and, and get the wiring done so that we can do this.
About what is and is not.
A, a whole house generator is about twenty-two to twenty-five, twenty-two, twenty-six kilowatts, that's a hundred and fifty. So you're basically equal to powering five houses, so I can imagine a hundred kilowatts to power all of a lot of this building.
Right, maybe it's just. Right, it just determines, you know, exactly what, what is all wired to it and what do we.
Yeah, I hear you, so you gotta have the right, I, I agree with Jess, you gotta have the right components, some kind of stack rank order.
My understanding going forward was that it was set up so that the critical, critical infrastructure could run. In the event that we lost that, um, normal power here, so that, that was my train of thought going into it.
Yeah, and I, I think that that is what we wanna go for. I don't, I, I honestly don't think it's necessary. To power this whole building with a generator, it is necessary to power all of our critical infrastructure.
Well, um, it seemed like you were making a motion, trustee riser.
I don't know, I'm willing to, I don't, I don't wanna rush it either.
Brandon, one other thing, so the Jackson Road generator, pump station, I thought that was already taken care of. I know it's bad, um, is it working? Because if that goes down.
It is working.
It is working, okay.
It is working, we're just in talks three places.
So the next time we have a multi-day power outage, you get on the phone and you make sure that we have a backup generator for that over there because. Half the township is, will have sewage in their basement if we don't.
Understood.
Okay, thank you.
Um, may I move to approve an expenditure, to ensure of up to a hundred thousand dollars for the purchase of a common standby. Gas generator and five-year warranty available through ARPA funds?
Moved by riser. So, Carrie. Please call a roll.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes, Brazil?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Motion adopted. Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you.
Okay. That brings us to. Item K four, which is establish permanent polling places in SiO Township, or Flinton.
Um, sure, there's a resolution before you to establish permanent polling places. Um, for the newly established precincts. Um, yesterday, the election commission met, um, to. Redraw the precinct lines in SiO Township. Um, resulting in a reduction from eight precincts, there's a map up there and a map in your packet. From eight precincts to five precincts. I wanna emphasize a couple things. Um, this does not change at all anybody's districts, house districts, county commissioner districts, any of the redistricting, it's all the same. What it allows us to do administratively in elections is administer five precincts and five polling places. Each precinct has its own ballot, um, with the current, um, precincts now. We're able to have no splits, it simplifies administration, reduces the number of teams we have working on election day. The number of polling places, the number of elections equipment we have to maintain. So it's a great opportunity, we jumped on yesterday at the election commission. And it was made possible by the state just starting fourteen days ago when they adjourned. The legislature adjourned, starting the clock to put into effect a bunch of these election reforms. That had not been given immediate effect, but, um, needed to wait till the legislature adjourned. They adjourned just in time to give us clerks enough time to make these changes locally. And then notice all of the voters so that everybody has information they need for the February twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-four presidential primary. And the subsequent twenty-twenty-four elections, so generally, what we never wanna do is change somebody's polling place in the middle. Of a big election year, and so that's why, um, I'm proposing we do it here tonight. Um, so you'll see, um, the consolidation of precincts and down to five, and the resolution. Before you today, um, would do three things, one. Establish, um, the five polling places. Two, establish SiO Meeting Hall right here as the early voting site, we really already did that, but. Affirming our participation in the countywide early voting agreement. Um, and three, um, noting that I'll take all the actions to notice voters to implement this. Um, we continue to have awesome, awesome, awesome polling places, thank you, everybody. Um, we do not pay a fee for our polling places, they're all very community-minded. And we'll maintain W I S D, Kuanas Club, Polo Fields and SiO Farms Community Clubhouse as the polling places. And we'll maintain W I S D, Kuanas Club, Polo Fields and SiO Farms Community Clubhouse as the polling places. Are there questions?
Just one comment.
Please.
You were referencing polling places, I think it's important to make sure that the word permanent.
Ah, yes.
It's written in here, but as we're talking.
That's right, thank you, Donna. Yeah, it's in the resolution but not in the motion, so I would ask for, um, somebody to offer the resolution then.
Wasn't in the motion.
Where is the motion?
Adapt resolution to establish permanent polling places inside township as presented.
Any other questions?
I would second that, or I would move it, if it's not moved, now I'll make that a motion.
You can be my second, so move by Hathaway, support by Riser.
And then you do a new map.
There's no further comment, please call a roll.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes, Brazil? Terry?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Resolution adopted seven zero.
Well, we kept you here for another agenda item. So this is approval of conditional offer of employment to Corey Banks for field technician. So, uh, would you guys like to come forward? You wanna come forward too?
Want to say anything? Yeah, so this is, this is Corey, um, we. We, uh, interviewed, um. More than five candidates for this position. Um, Corey stood out among the candidates, um. Most noticeably has twelve years at Consumers Energy with, um, working in the gas industry. Um, it's basically a direct correlation, um, to, um, underground utilities when it comes to water. Um, just different fittings, um, so he has extensive, um, work in that field where he's done missed digs. Um, underground digging and excavations, uh, reading maps, uh, in print, talking to customers. He spent, um, some of his time there as the team lead, um, which is more like our field supervisor here. Um, directing his, um, his coworkers and getting the job done. Um, so I believe he is a, has a really good fit for our position here.
Well, Corey, I just wanted to say, I'm excited, um, to be able to offer you the position here in SiO Township, you've got a lot of great experience. Um, and, um, really to Brandon and and to my colleagues here, this will be the first time since I've been here in twenty nineteen. That the utilities team will have three, um, members in the field, so again, I think it's long overdue. Um, it's been, you know, they've, they've been, I think, understaffed. For a while, and that said, Brandon, um, I look forward to kind of. Measurable output of work from the additional third person, I know you'll be able to report on that. So you got a long list of things to keep up on, maintenance, hydrant flushing, a lot of the things that we haven't kept up on as much as we want to. So I hope that this third person, um, will allow you to do that.
Further questions or comments?
Welcome.
Thank you, I'm excited. Okay, to approve the conditional offer of employment to Corey Banks to serve as field technician for SiO Township, the conditional offer is subject. To a satisfactory background reference check and approval by the Board of Trustees and, uh, except, is that what we're giving?
I would support.
Move by Brazil, support by Riser. Um, and I think we can do this on a voice vote, can't we?
Yeah.
Yeah, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Supposed. Welcome aboard.
Thank you, Brandon, for all of your work, yes.
Okay, that brings us to item K six. Uh, this is the planning commission appointments. And I know there, um, have some questions that have been raised about these, um, the, uh, just. Where was the statute, um, statutory authority of. Um, supervisor is to make the nomination, so.
It's to appoint that nominee.
I think actually it's the opposite, it's to nominate people to be appointed, right?
To appoint.
It's to appoint with approval of.
Oh, all right, well, okay, so to appoint with approval of the board. So, um, I'll make the model motion so that we can have a discussion of the people that I'm putting forward as a supervisor to appoint. Jan Culbertson, Kim Moore to three-year terms, Bob Hyde and Bob Walsh to two-year terms. And Andrea Rothning and Ryan Yapple to one-year terms on the planning commissions commencing on November twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three. Is there a second?
Awesome.
Okay, so move, move by Hathaway, support by Palmer, is there discussion?
I'd make the motion to split the question. Take each nominee at a time.
I agree, I would agree with that, that's not what I was gonna say, but, um, I would agree with splitting the question. So we can go through each individual, we don't wanna lock three individuals together, it's sloppy. And it doesn't make sense to do it that, but that's not how we typically do it.
It is how we typically do it.
In the past, it was never.
In the past?
With you, yes, we've done it that way.
So for the past three years, we've done it thus.
But before that, we did not typically, let's go, let's get the work, okay.
All right, so what would the splitting of the question look like?
My motion would be to, um, split the questions so that we consider each open seat as its own question.
In other words, consider Rothney, then Walsh, then Yapple?
Each seat.
In order?
Each seat, yeah, each seat to which the supervisor has nominated someone. A point, whatever, it's fine, what I'm saying is, my motion is to split the question. So that we consider each question, um, for each open seat, I think. Um, I would, I would also just share with people, you know, the, what is for discussion only, the attachment though, if you'd like a reference. Cheat sheet, it's, it's, uh. I think ninety-five percent accurate, any mistakes are mine. But I have a list here of seat requirements, just so we're kinda keeping track of which seats we're talking about, yep.
So I printed this out, has it changed since I printed it out?
Um, very slightly, I just added, no, nothing substantive, substantively. Like I, so really, you're, no, you don't, you don't need to giggle, John, I'm serious.
No, no, I'm, I'm trying to look for it, now look, it's probably changed.
Terry, I print, I printed out a new one, um, at your seat, John.
I know.
So you emailed something earlier, has it changed?
Guys, the new stuff that has red line on it, anything red? I just added more clarifying language that Mariah and Jim discussed this morning, there's nothing substantive on this.
Yeah. I'll second the motion.
The motion is to split the question so that we're considering each of the individual.
Seats.
Seats. To which people are doing nominated, but it's not changing the relationship between the terms. For each of the seats with the people who are put forward for those terms, because there is a sort of logic to this. And I don't want to lose that in.
I don't think that gets, I don't think that gets disrupted, though.
Okay, well, I just wanna make sure in splitting this up that we're, how, what we're splitting and what's trapped.
Yeah, we're gonna just go with each seat.
Okay, so, so, so we start with the first person, uh, that would be Jan Culbertson.
Okay, and so she.
Well, I guess, do we need to vote on the motion?
I, I think we probably need to vote on splitting unless we can do it by acclamation.
Yeah, I think we should vote on it.
It seems like there's acclamation for to do it that way, so I would.
All in favor, I would.
Yeah, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so let's proceed with. Uh, Jan Culbertson first, um, and what are the comments about Jan that people would like to make?
Can I just say? Say, I just wanna clarify, so she's at, she's, she, her term is ending eleven twenty-four, twenty-three. And I just wanna clarify, she's, um, one of the qual- qualified electors, um, being nominated for a.
Three-year term.
A three-year term, okay, great.
And she is currently serving as the chair of the planning commission.
But that would be up to the planning commission to.
Yeah, that's not a board consideration, right?
It, that's not up to the board, but it is a fact that she is currently serving as the chair of the planning mission.
But we're not appointing her.
Right.
Yes.
That is also a fact. But trustee Noel.
Start.
You sure?
Go around.
Trustee Noel, go ahead.
Um, I've worked with Jan. For several years, more than, more than several years. She does an excellent job, she's thorough. She tries to understand divergent perspectives. So I fully support her, I've worked with her on the CBA. We have disagreed on some issues regarding planning, but we still talk it through and, um. I fully support her.
Here is just, so why Jan and Kim for three years and not Bob Hyde as for three year?
Well, um, Jan, I happened to be able to determine, um, was due for, the seat that she's in was due for a, a re- a renewal of this. A three-year appointment, so she, she is one of the seats that we could identify when it was. It started, when it ended, um.
When we kinda got off track.
When we got off track, and then between Kim and Bob, it was kind of a toss-up. Um, because both of them started at the same time and they both filled seats where we could not know exactly what the. Um, start and end date were for those seats. Do you understand, we lost track of the staggering that is required by statute for the planning commission. So, so we're trying to reestablish that, and I just had to sort of choose between Kim and Bob for one for a three-year and one for a two-year.
Did you talk with them? To see if one wants a two-year and one wants a three-year?
I did not speak with Bob, I did have a conversation with him because she happened to be passing through the office. But it was a, a judgment call.
Okay. Um, I wanna thank you, Will, for advertising the opportunity for people to be on the planning commission, I thought you did a really good job of that. Um. I think there was an article on the Sun Times or Nextdoor, a couple things.
Both things.
So that was great, and that's something, um, I would like to see consistently across all of our committees that we do that. Um, that's something for the policy, but wanna acknowledge you for that and thank you for that. Um, I also, um, want to say that, um. I support getting back on the staggering of terms of the six. Um. I also would recommend that we move away from eleven twenty-four, or I guess we're at eleven twenty-eight. As the date, so aside from the year, I support the, um, three-year term. Um, but that, I would propose that, um, we would, and I'm not making a motion right now, but in, in the discussion of that. That we consider this first three-year term, um, to go not through eleven twenty-four, eleven. Sorry, Will, let me get your date, not through eleven twenty-eight, twenty-six. But. Is that, is that when it would go, Will?
Well, I'd have to look.
Yeah, you've got eleven twenty-eight, twenty-three, it would commence on there, plus three years, that takes us to November twenty-six. Instead of ending on November twenty-eighth, twenty-six, I'd like to get away from. The holidays and get to a standard start date of. September first. And so start to have these end on August thirty-first, and if that means that we appoint Jan to, you know, three and a half years, that's great. Um, but, but the reason for standardizing the date is, is twofold. Administratively, and I can just hear Rebecca's voice in my ear right now. So planning commission members, board of review members, CBA members, they're all temporary employees. Every time we have these appointments, and we have like fifty dates that they're appointed on, you know, we have, we start payroll. We get their email set up, we get them sworn in. And so administratively, it's a little bit of a headache and I think an unnecessary headache. Second, it's pretty typical to have. And in the county and other places, to have a regular date. That appointments start. And when you look at the range of dates that we have, it, it's, it's really kind of random. And so I would like to propose that you start fixing that with these appointments tonight. To start having them go through August thirty-first so that over time, we slowly evolve. It will also help us do better outreach. So that there's one point in the year where we're doing a big push out to the community, maybe in the spring. To say, hey, there's opportunities here and get more attention, so. It, I know it seems like a small thing, but over time it becomes a very big thing. It becomes a headache administratively for those of us doing the work, and it becomes, um. A missed opportunity to do better outreach to the community, particularly when these appointments are happening around the holidays when. Hopefully between Thanksgiving and Christmas, you know, people have something other to do than tune into township business.
May I comment?
Please.
You can't go more than three years, so they would have to be shorter, the statute says three-year terms.
So, so it'd be, we'd have to shorten it a little bit.
You can't, you can't say add that extra time.
I see, so it'd have to be reduced a little. So in that case, in this situation, then it would have to go from eleven twenty-eight, twenty-three. To, in this scenario, eight thirty-one, twenty-six. Twenty-six.
I, 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 I would like to counter this suggestion by saying what I said earlier today, and that is. This is a solution in search of a problem, this is, there is not really an issue here. It's not a big headache to have regular appointments or, or not. Um, it's not that big of a deal to have the appointments occurring in November. Because once we've staggered them, uh, there will be only a handful of appointments that will be occurring, and I think your objection before was that they would be occurring shortly after. The election, which happens every four years.
Multiple those years, yeah, that's an additional one.
So, so there, that would be an issue, um, only with a handful of appointments, and you'd have to be making the board, whoever the board was. Would have to be making some appointments because you'd have to be, um, uh, making new appointments of board representatives to those different committees anyway. And as for advertising and getting a good pool, I think it's much better to be doing that in the fall. With the goal of appointments in November or December than it is to be doing it in the summer. Because you have a lot of people who are gone in the summer, and that is not a good time to get a good pool of people, that's not a good time to be advertising and trying to get people's attention. I think actually the schedule that we're on is a better schedule than moving it to the end of August.
Be advertising every newsletter anyway.
Well, we do advertise and we advertise on the website, and those ads that I pushed out. Highlighted the planning commission, but they, they also, you know, sought applicants for all of the boards and commissions for all of the vacancies. All people had to do was look at the website in order to see what terms were coming up, what kinds of positions were open on the website. Trustee Noel.
I don't have a strong opinion on what Jessica is saying about the reason. But I wanna note in the Michigan Planning Enabling Act. Um, MCL one-two-five-point-three-eight-one-five, it does direct a board to as nearly as possible. Have the terms of one-third of all of the, the planning commission members expire each year. So there's to be a rotational basis, I just.
That's what we're trying to get back to.
I know, I know you are, but we've kinda got. Kinda got off a little bit. Um. So, I'm just saying, this is, we, we do need to do this.
We definitely need to get the, a position staggered for the planning commission, if not for anything else. But I think there's an effort in all of these appointments to try and reestablish more staggered terms. And, um, I hope we can hold on to that as we consider all these different factors.
Should, statute.
For planning commission. Um, are there any comments or questions from this side of the room?
I don't know, if September first, August first, November first.
Different, it could be a different date in the year, I mean, the county does January first, I think that would be a headache. Cause trying to do the work and recruit through the holidays, you know, April one, we're busy in March doing the budget. Um, you know, I, I'd be open to a different date, I'm. Um, you know, I, I'd be open to a different date. I'm not wed to September one. But I do think it's important for outreach administration um, to really get it in one date. And I do think every four years, it's important to have it away from November twentieth at noon, when there's a seven-person changeover at this table, because it you know, reduces the chance that there's going to be political meddling.
More stability.
More stability covering, you know, I think, you know, that, that's an additional reason. So.
You think there's going to be a seven-person changeover at this table?
I'm just saying. What I'm saying is all four seats are up.
I'm introducing all new people.
All, all seven seats are up.
I have a legal question for Ryan. All right. So when there's a new board that's elected in, let's say all seven of us, the terms what, that are appointed, they still they're still in, um, serving until their appointments up.
Correct. The PC, sorry, yeah.
Okay, just to be clear, right.
Yeah, the new, the new board does not get to start a completely fresh plan.
Right. Good. So what are we doing? So.
So we're looking to see if there's comments from others.
I, I do want to speak um, to Jan. I just want to say, I think Jan does a great job as planning commission chair. Um, she works so hard and she's been so incredibly generous with her time. Um, with the sustainability task force, other work that she does. Um, I, I, Jan and I, you know, disagree on community wastewater treatment facilities. I'm still devastated and concerned about the Heritage Woods bringing in a private wastewater treatment plant to Syo for the first time. And I think ninety-five percent of the other environmental policies that Jan is promoting are completely supportable. I think we, with the EV charging stations, you know, we need to get better educated and make sure that we're, you know, doing this the right way. Um, but I think Jan's done a really great job um, as PC chair. And, and definitely support um, her appointment to a three-year term. Um, hopefully uh, ending on a more standardized date. Be it September first, May first, whatever it is the board chooses.
I, I think November twenty-eighth is perfectly fine. Um, it's not going to be a problem. I, I just don't understand why you're trying to move that. It adds a level of complication to this. It's so unnecessary.
It actually, for, for, for the staff doing the work um, that we do when we have new committee members, it actually simplifies things. Um, truly, I know it seems like a small thing about starting payroll on November twenty-eighth or getting somebody's email. Or what day do they start and this or that? It's, it's a, it's it's just a, it's, it's a simple thing. The board doesn't have to choose to correct this problem now. We could, we could wait until twenty-twenty-six. Um, but, you know, no time like the present.
I think we're solving enough problems as it is by reintroducing the staggered appointments. Um, I, I would urge people to just not overcomplicate things with trying to, you know, address a problem that doesn't exist.
Would it be, would it make sense to have them over before the fall election? To take politics out of it or whatever? I mean, like, what, what if November, would November first be a compromise that you could live with?
Every four years, there would be two planning commission seats that in theory could be um, at immediately, you know, maybe the second meeting after the election or something like that. But they could be addressed before the election if the board chose, right? Because you could just say in, I don't know, October, that you were um, addressing the planning commission appointments um, proactively to take effect um, in, you know, when they came due, whenever it was in November. You don't have to do it you know, at the last minute as we are tend to do.
I, I don't have strong feelings about whether it's October first, November first. I do, I do want to make it easy here. I do want to make it easy on the staff who has to do the payroll and transitioning and all the rigmarole they have to go through. I guess I would, I'd defer to Joyce as our chief administrative office. Has, does she have any um, strong feelings one way or the other on this?
Well, yeah, I don't have any strong feelings one way or the other. I have a question.
Can I just raise one more point to John? On the politics, as, as you're making me think. Um, you know, the reality, at least for the last many years here in Syo Township, is the politics around township offices, kind of um, the lame duckness of a township board is between the August primary and November twentieth of taking off office. And so if a goal here was to take it out of there, um, we could move the start date to before the August primary might be wise.
Why?
Like a July one.
It, it's just like imagining that there's some kind of salience to lame duckness as, as a concept. I mean, the, the board continues to serve as a board through their terms. They don't sort of have their power as a board taken away at some portion. I mean, that's sort of like saying, oh, well, Barack Obama, you can't nominate someone to Supreme Court because you're in the last year of your term, you know?
Do we need to do this? Do we need to determine the term tonight? Could we say up to?
No, you have to determine a date.
I, I think we have to appoint people to specific terms. I think we just, just appoint the people to the, the term that's proposed by the, you know, the motion. And if, and if there's some board at some later date wants to try and, you know, ship things, ship things around, I don't, you, it's, in your view, I guess it's a correction. Um, in my view, it's a, a solution in search of a problem. But um, I think we're complicating things in a way that is just going to tie us in knots over nothing.
I will say in the past, before the planning commissioners got off track, I went back and looked about fifteen years of appointments. They ended on June thirtieth. I mean, that's another option. It was kind of a June thirtieth, July one start.
And Joyce, I have a question. Have you, have you talked with Rebecca? Is Rebecca the, I mean, she's paid, she does payroll. Have, have you had a conversation?
About, I mean, I have previously, but.
I haven't had any conversation with Rebecca. I didn't know this was going to be an issue, so I really can't comment on it at this point.
But I would like to, if this, if this is an issue for Rebecca, I would like this, um, you know, to support our staff.
Yeah, but Rebecca has not approached me. Um, she has not approached anyone. She's been, she's been working on these appointments since October.
I'm sorry, but, oh.
Yeah, I just can't.
Okay.
Yeah, it's killing me. Sorry.
Take care of yourself, Mark.
Sorry.
I, I just want to say, and the last thing I'll say is, you know, Rebecca Christie and I have, have have talked about this several times, the unevenness of it. I'm just saying it's a consideration for the board. Um, as is the outreach, as is the, you know, additional assurance of kind of taking any township politics out of it. I think, you know, July first does it. I think any standard date does it, probably July first better than September first. That's all.
I, I think either July first or September first would be bad dates, especially from the point of view of creating a pool of recruiting people. You're, you're doing your recruiting, if you're doing it in proximity to those appointment dates at the, at the, probably the worst time of the year. I think this is actually a good time to be having the appointments and if you want to be getting a good pool of people.
How about earlier in the year? I mean, could be May first?
I, I, like I said, it's a, a solution in search of a problem. I would just leave it as it is because to change it to anything else is adding another layer of complication to what we have been some of us working on for months to try and iron out every objection that has been raised about one aspect or another of the appointments. I think, you know, the staggering of the appointments is an important thing to reestablish.
Yep.
And we've got that in this motion. And there's no need to start, you know, playing around with dates for terms.
It's. So we can standardize this year, we can standardize in twenty-twenty-six. I mean, it's just.
When you say standardized, what do you mean?
The.
Change the dates.
The date, one at a time.
Or we can leave the standard dates that we have right now and just use the staggered terms that would occur with those dates. And the future board elected after twenty-twenty-four or twenty-twenty-eight would have two planning commissioners potentially to consider shortly after they took office.
If we're already going to correct the stagger, the lack of staggered terms and implement staggered terms. Could that be the starting? And could we leave the decisions about changing the dates to the next?
Or it would be to our policy conversation. And when we address that, then we can, you know, address, if we want to include that in the policy, we can leave these as they are and then
have that discussion.
Have that discussion about that. I mean, we could, you know, when there's an opportunity to fix things, it, it seems straightforward. Um.
This does not seem straightforward. True thing to be does not seem straightforward, using existing dates to work with, I think does.
You created these existing dates.
It's just by happenstance. It's by, it's by the, you know, the board forgetting to reappoint the planning commissioners, serving until so there, there was, there was no deliberation that, that resulted in eleven twenty-four.
Second set of.
That was, what, what was deliberative was the June thirtieth, July one, that used to be the term, so.
I, I don't even know what you're, what you mean. I mean, we were dealing with a situation where all of the terms for all of the appointments had expired in twenty-twenty.
I was talking about.
We were dealing with them in a methodical way.
Absolutely, Will.
It was very deliberative. The only thing that we lost track of at that time, the members of the board uh, was the staggered, reestablishing staggered terms, and that's what we're addressing now.
What I was referencing was when the staggered terms got off, and it was a long time ago, like twenty thirteen or something. That, that's when the board, before they got off track, they had that standard date. So that's all.
So. I don't remember standard dates. Let's just deal with getting the, you know, the terms like we're trying to do. Step one.
Okay.
And then the suggestion has been made. We've done a lot of talking tonight. Then let's consider that because there's going to be more things that we're going to be looking at.
Okay. That sounds good, Donna.
So can we vote on these in order? So Jan Culbertson would be for a three-year term.
Wait, so we'll vote on Jan, but I have many more comments here.
Right, right. Well, I'd just like to start moving through our broken up um, um, motion so that we can deal with each of the individuals as we agreed that we would do.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Jan Culbertson as a qualified elector to the planning commission for a term of three years commencing today. Eleven twenty-eight, twenty-three, and ending on eleven twenty-seven, twenty-six. Is that how?
I, I don't know. For three years, I, I think it's simpler just to say for three years, starting from this date. And however that has been handled in the past on our website.
Well, but those, yeah, and that's fine, Will. But, but when you go like that and on our website, that's actually the the work. So we can say starting today for three years?
Yeah.
Yeah. And I'll support it.
Okay, so move by Flintoff, support by Noel. Can we do it by voice vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, so now we're considering Kim Moore for a three-year term commencing today. Trustee Noel.
Um, I will support Kim Moore. She's done an excellent job. I've talked to her many times. Um. I Syo's lucky to have her and Jan and others. So I support her.
Okay. Other comments?
I would move, I would move her appointment for three years.
I'd say, move by risers, support by Palmer.
I would just, um, also note she is a qualified elector and would be taking one of um, those seats.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, moving on. Bob Hyde uh, for, is put forward for a two-year term commencing today. Are there any comments, questions?
I support Bob.
Yeah, I think, I think Bob does a great job. Um, he's a qualified elector. And yeah, I would support his nomination, our appointment.
I would move it.
Okay, moved by riser. Support, support by Noel. Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That brings us to Bob Walsh for a two-year term.
Okay.
This is where I want to pause because I wanted to make some very specific comments about Kathleen Brandt. And I want to say thank you to all of the applicants who have applied.
Yes.
In my opinion, all are qualified.
Agreed.
However, we do have an applicant who deserves some very serious consideration, and that's Kathleen. Um, she's uniquely qualified for the planning commission. She has been attending township board meetings for years. She has a deep understanding of the many issues this board is facing. The history of some of these issues. She has watched and attended planning commission meetings by Zoom. She attended our recent J-Rod planning commission discussion on the Jackson Road District. Um, some board members weren't even at that meeting. And Kathleen participated. She sat up at the table. She was actively involved and engaged in the discussion, made valuable points. Um, her, her background is well-suited for this. She has a business background. She's familiar with IT issues. She's familiar with business procurement issues. She has demonstrated a willingness to attend meetings, to analyze issues. Residents in this township would be well-served by having her on the planning commission. So I have to ask, Will. How did you decide on the three applicants that you were going to support? What were the criteria that you used in nominating the three that were in our packet?
Out of, was it seven applicants?
Yeah.
I think, yeah, seven.
Six or seven, I can't.
Yeah.
Um, so the, it's a little different for each one. I can, and since we're considering Bob Walsh at the moment, I'll, I'll, I'll speak to his.
She's asking about Kathleen Brandt.
I'm raising the issue of Kathleen.
No, she asked, she, well, okay, I know you raised the issue of Kathleen, and then you asked the question, how, what did I consider when considering?
I wanted to know why Kathleen wasn't on your list of nominated applicants.
Wasn't even in the packet along with the others.
Yeah, and why her resume wasn't put in the packet. Trustees had to request it from Jessica to get hers and some other.
Well, this isn't just about Kathleen. I, my practice is not to put forward those who are not nominated or not, not being offered for appointment. Because I don't, I don't, I don't think that really helps. You know, people, you know, to say, oh, this, this is the person who's not being nominated, the person who applied but didn't get the offer or the invitation or however you want to view it. Um, I don't want to dwell on, on sort of what the I, I guess, you know, you might characterize as the negatives. Um, you know, what differentiated a candidate, you know, I want to focus on the what the positives are of the candidates who are being put forward for, uh, the boards considering. So that's, that is why, it's not my practice to sort of pull all of the other.
Why the three out of the seven?
So that, that, that is the question that trustee Noel asked, and that's what I was about to answer, if I may.
Okay, then I want to ask you something.
Okay, all right, well, you can ask more questions. Um, so Bob Walsh in particular um um, was a candidate I put forward, and I put him forward back in October before we had more vacancies. Um, in part because of his past service on the zoning board of appeals. And um, because um, that keeps in place a connection, a liaison function that we want to have between the planning commission and the zoning board of appeals. The planning commission and the zoning board of appeals. In fact, I think we're even required to have.
That is a, that is a particular seat.
Right, so that's, that is one of the seats that we have to fill.
Well aware of.
Right, okay, so this allowed, well, so up until now, that, that seat was, um. On the zoning board of appeals was filled by planning commission chair. Jan Culbertson, and as, um, Jessica just pointed out, Jan is doing a lot of work, sort of above, beyond the, what you would sort of. Ord- ordinarily expect of a planning commission chair in terms of the kinds of leadership she's providing for the township. And that's a big time commitment, and we're not her only time commitment. So. Um, this was an opportunity to take a little bit of pressure off of Jan. She's been serving that role on the zoning board of appeals for many years and, um. Keeping in place the connection between the planning commission and the zoning board of appeals while. Taking advantage of the strengths that Bob Walsh has demonstrated serving at the zoning board of appeals.
Is Jan?
Okay, so I.
Jan's just not being reappointed to ZBA as the planning commission connection. Bob Walsh would be taking that place. See, that's what I mean. There's a lot of work that went into these appointments to make them all fit together.
And Bob Walsh will do an excellent job. I enjoy working with Bob. So this isn't about Bob. Um, but I want to finish, please. Um. In order, this board is the decision-making body. So the entire board has to vote on the candidates.
Correct.
In order for every member of this board. To be able to evaluate the applicants. That would mean evaluate all of the applicants who have submitted. Letters of intent, their resumes, whatever. They would need to see all of that material in order to make a decision. So when you only include three in the packet. We don't have the full body of knowledge that we need to have to make an informed decision.
Trustee Noel, will you please nominate Kathleen Brandt for this position?
Well, this isn't quite the way. I can't do it right here at this time. But. I want you to consider this, Will. Because. We want to make, we want to come to decisions that are reflective of the township as a whole. That meet, needs, different needs in the community. And here we have a person who has done an outstanding job over a period of time. She's very knowledgeable. She's familiar with the issues. I think we're doing a disservice to the township if we don't consider her.
And we can have nine qualified electors.
The, the planning commission, it's required that there be five to nine qualified electors. I know in Siles typically for a very long time, but seven.
Then that can solve the issue, could. Because your points are well taken, Kathy. These that we had before are very qualified, so. Then why not appoint an additional?
Well.
Right.
Expanding the planning commission.
Good idea, Donna.
Not something that I was considering, and I guess we could consider that, but there are implications. Without getting into all of the details of all of the pluses and minuses of the different candidates.
And what are they, Will?
Well, one key thing that I'm mindful of is that, um. Kathleen Brand is currently serving on our compensation commission. Her term is up until, I think, twenty twenty-five. She would have to resign from the compensation commission in order to serve in any other capacity in any government.
Okay, we're gonna need to get a legal opinion.
Well, first, first of all, I just want to say that, so this is good information, and this is why we're having this conversation, Will, so that we can talk about these things. So first of all, Kathleen Brand is a qualified elector. She is qualified to serve on the planning commission. If she would need to resign. From the compensation commission would be a question I'd have for our township attorney, which would hinge on if we consider planning commissioners employees or not. And certainly, if Kathleen Brand has applied for the planning commission. And I know we've done this with, um. Mark Perry. Remember? When he was being considered for trustee, we trusted Mark to make that decision for himself. He knew if he were appointed trustee, he would have to step down from the board of review.
That's right.
And you know what we did? We trusted Mark, like the grown-up he is, to make that decision for himself, and I would trust Kathleen Brand. As the grown-up she is to make that decision for herself. So I doubt, but don't know, Will, if there's been any conversation with Kathleen Brand about. About her serving on both the compensation commission and the planning commission and what she would choose, but it would be her choice. Depending on what our township attorney says about this.
Well, I can tell you, I've had conversations with Jim Fink about this. Question of what someone would have to, you know, what criteria would be applicable in considering someone for the compensation commission. Whether someone could, could be appointed to the compensation commission, for example, if they worked for a state university.
University, we went through.
Right, we went through all of this.
That's not the issue.
But we didn't, we didn't ask about planning commission.
But it is, because if anyone is serving in any capacity in government. They cannot serve on a compensation.
As an employee.
In any, in, so, any capacity, that's what I was told.
Did you interview all the candidates, the seven?
Jillian, can I just, I have a couple of comments. The first is that you have an ordinance that says that your planning commission will have seven members.
But the bylaws state differently.
Well, the bylaws are just a guide. The ordinance is the law.
Yeah, and then the statute says.
Excuse me. If you're going to increase the number, you have to change your ordinance.
Okay.
So it can be done. It can't necessarily be done.
Done tonight. Okay.
Yes, I believe that it's true that Kathleen Brand, if she continues on the, on the compensation commission, she can also be on the. I do believe that that is the case.
Okay.
The third thing that I'm gonna say, and I might be overstepping a little bit here, but I'm, I'm trying to. Kind of pull you back to where you're, you're, you started. What the statute says about the planning commission is that the, the chief executive officer, we'll call him that, the supervisor appoints. Your supervisor is putting people up for appointment. You can vote on those people. I, I, um, appreciate that there are other people that you want to talk about, but I, I think that. What you're, what the, the goal and the intention for tonight is that the supervisor is putting people up for appointment, and you're voting on those people.
We vote them up or down.
And if you, if you vote down and there's a new, there's a, a spot that hasn't been filled, then we'll deal with it. Yes. So then the supervisor would be bringing someone else. Does that make sense?
Of course it makes sense, but then in essence, you're saying. Well, you may need to vote down people that. Would be qualified, that would work. But because he didn't consider. This person.
I did. I considered all of the people. I considered all of the people. I just don't want to get into a big discussion about. How I made the decisions that I made. I would prefer not to do that. I think it's, it doesn't, it's just a fact that there's a conflict between serving on the compensation commission and serving on the planning commission.
Right, and so the, but, and this is a hypothetical on Kathleen. I do, do appreciate Mariah, your comments, all three of them. Um, and, and I, I do think, you know, it's, we went through this before with, um, compensation commission appointments. Other, other appointments, um, from the supervisor. Um, and in those scenarios, the majority didn't find them acceptable, and, you know, we vote them up or down.
And, and I'll tell you that Kathleen Brand is very valuable on the compensation commission. I've sat in on those meetings. It, it, she, um, and I'm not, I'm not saying, you know.
Exactly.
But she is, but she's very valuable in that role.
And I, and I would say too, it's, it's her decision. I'm just, and this is a meeting you, you weren't at, Mariah. But again, I just think it goes frankly to, to some of the. Inadvertently patronizing behavior of this board. When I think back to Mark Perry. And, and what we said to Mark was, you know, Mark, you're gonna have to make this decision for yourself. He's like, absolutely. We're like, okay, Mark, we trust you. And here is a conversation, I think, that this board has probably never had, no one on this board. Including, well, correct me if I'm wrong, has ever had with Kathleen Brand.
I haven't had that.
And about which she would choose. Again, she's not being, she's not being, um, appointed tonight by the supervisor. But, but I just, I just share that, and, and, and it's not to you or Will in particular, Mariah, but. I just have to say, like, this presumption about what Kathleen.
I, I don't, I don't think that's what, that's not at all what I'm saying.
I know, it's not what you're saying.
That's not at all what I'm saying. And, and what, what I'm saying is that if you have, if you have two positions. And you have a person that could function equally in either one, sometimes you might say, I want to keep this person here.
Absolutely.
And that is the prerogative of the person appointed.
Yeah, if, if we. It is, okay.
Okay, if we know Kathleen, at least from experience, and you just listed a lot of things. More than likely, she knows that she would have to leave the compensation commission. She applied for this position, knowing that she would have to, I'm assuming, because she does her research, that she would have to give up the compensation commission.
Well, I would assume so, but she's not being appointed, um, right, by the supervisor tonight. And I, I will just say, the seven applicants to all of them. They were all really, really good. I mean, they're all qualified and they're all good. I, I think that there are some who would serve the planning commission better than others at this time. I would hope that all of them stay involved and get involved somehow, but I'm, I'm prepared to go forward with whatever, um, person that. Um, to, to make a decision on whatever person supervisor, um, puts forward for appointment.
So can we?
Can, can, can I, I haven't, I've been kind of quiet. Um. You know. We could talk about changing our ordinance to take it to nine, and it, it would, I can see some value having a broader. You know, scope. Kathleen, she does her homework. She comes prepared. I, I, um. Uh, but I, I say, I, I'm gonna be in support of all. All seven, uh, appointments. We keep using the word appointment and nomination and, but really, it doesn't matter until they're. Should we approve?
Approve.
You know, that's one, that's the verb that matters here. But I'm gonna be in support of all these appointments, but I'm also open to. Uh, Donna's suggestion that maybe we bring more people onto the planning commission. So, uh, I, to the extent that that's something that, uh, comes. Come flows from this, I would be in support of that, and then we could, um.
Can we have that conversation with, involve more input before we move towards?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not moving to amend an ordinance tonight, but, 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 uh. But I, I would be open to that.
Yeah, or could we even have these votes subject to a plan? To amend the ordinance and increase the number on the planning.
No, I, I think we have to make it according to the law that we have in front of us right now. If people want to consider expanding the ordinance, that's a separate question.
So it's our statute, but, um.
I think you can support if you want. If you move to go to nine, I don't think we should go to eight because of tie votes.
I agree.
But, but if you move to go to nine, I, I see myself supporting that.
Okay. So, Mariah, hopefully, could we? Um, go through the process of increasing the number on the planning commission?
Um, it will be a couple of months. I think that's aggressive, maybe three.
Yeah.
Three, second meeting.
We've got hearings, we've got public hearings.
Hope that we would have.
The draft.
The planning commission chair.
And, and Kathy, I, I appreciate this conversation about potentially expanding it. I, I think, Donna, you have a great idea. And something we can look at. I don't see any relationship, um, logically, between expanding to nine and the appointments. Um, that the supervisor's putting forward tonight. I don't see any contingency. I don't see any relationship between it. So I think it's, um, I like the idea. I think it's separate from consideration of the appointments tonight. I think that, you know, I think there are applicants. Um, and, and they're all fine. I think there are some that would be better for the planning commission at this moment in time for Sio. Than the ones, um, that, uh, the supervisor, I think, plans to appoint. But, you know, he can appoint and we can vote up or down, um, and, and, and go from there. We currently have. Uh, three people appointed.
Correct.
Plus John, who is still serving.
Correct.
Through eleven twenty, twenty-four. So we have four members. So what I want to note is, we have a functioning planning commission right now. We have four members right now.
I know, but it sounds like, are you, are, in my readings, between the lines that we should stop right here and not vote on anymore?
No, I don't think we're gonna do that. I'm just saying, if that happened, we still have a functioning planning commission. We have another meeting December twelfth. And, and I do think, you know.
Timeout, Jess.
Yeah.
The planning commission. Is seven members unless we choose to change in the future. For a good reason. Uh, the planning commission is the first important step. For Sio, the future, et cetera. We, we need to do what we have to do and not, well, let's delay or let's hold off. No, we need a full working planning commission. They are critical in the structure.
Is there interest in this group? In moving on, expanding the numbers on the planning commission? So that it might be something we address at our next board meeting.
If you're asking for a straw poll, straw poll, I would put my hand up and.
I would too, because there's a lot of work in this township.
I, I would, I would too. I, I think more diverse participation, the better. I think that, you know. It, you know, the supervisor can appoint who he wants to appoint, so I don't know, it will get the kind of diversity I would be interested in. Um, with nine versus seven. So again, I don't. I mean, I think it's helpful.
What's the kind of diversity you're interested in?
My hope is that, Will, you would seriously consider Kathleen.
Well, I, 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 I don't know why there's this assumption that, that, the applicant pool wasn't all of them seriously considered.
Did you interview all of them?
I did not personally interview them. I delegated the interviewing to Jan Culbertson. She interviewed each of the applicants. I talked with Jan about it. I, I communicated with the people that, um, were selected to be put forward before you tonight.
So the chair of planning commission interviewed all the applicants?
Correct. I looked, I, I, no, no. I looked at all of their application materials. I happen to know, um, something about some of them. Um, but it's not. It's, there's not some requirement of, you know, personal one-on-one interviews in order to select people to serve, you know, or to be put forward as appointees.
So. Just point of order, our bylaws do say, a term of each member shall be three years, but a member shall hold office until his or her successor is appointed. So, so we do have the.
You do have seven.
Yeah, 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 that's all.
That's true, John.
We could stop right now with what we've done.
I would recommend that. I mean, what about Rakesh who wants off, has other things? What about Jeff who wants off, has other things?
And Chris Chade has to.
And Chris, I think, I think we should.
They, they haven't resigned, I mean.
We should do this.
I think we should go forward.
Tonight's seven, and then future two more, uh, you know, Mariah, put that on Mariah's to-do list. Uh, sorry, Mariah.
Mariah, you're fine. There, there is, um, differences between the bylaws and the ordinance. Does this match?
There's all.
Yeah. We can't really go with the bylaws.
Well, great. And the bylaws just say not less than five nor, nor more than nine. It doesn't set a specific number. Well, great. And the bylaws just say not less than five nor nor more than nine. It doesn't set a specific number.
Right, okay, well, what John just said about um. The serving out the term of the next appointment.
It's in the statute.
It is, okay, so that part is, all right.
Yeah, but but I think that. I don't think that what John meant is that we should just continue with the people because two of them, I think they have resigned. Jessica, I think that they've said that they're no longer willing to serve.
Okay.
And Chris Chang cannot serve.
I I'm I'm aware of that, yeah.
Come January.
Can I, I I'm aware of that too. Um so, question, Mariah, um on the seat. Um for the person who um must also serve as a member of the ZBA. Might be kind of a chicken egg question. However, here it is. It looks like we need to have a planning commissioner. Serve on the on the ZBA. So if we're appointing, um. Well, I guess it doesn't matter. I've answered my own question. So right now, I'm just trying to think of the logic of it. So right now, Jan Culbertson is a PC member. And is serving on the ZBA in that capacity.
She, so she.
Or did we also appoint her to the ZBA?
She, I believe that she was a appointed as her, in in her PC role.
Okay.
Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
And and um.
Many years ago.
I I don't know if this conversation helps with your thought process or not, but I was in the conversation where. Um when Will and Jan were talking about Bob Walsh and and how Bob Walsh. Was doing such good work on the ZBA and if he went to the planning commission, she would not be able to continue on the ZBA. She was fine with that. She thought that. It was my, it was my understanding that she thought it was more important to have Bob Walsh on the planning commission than her to be on the ZBA. Is is that what you understood also?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And she she said, you know, she would be relieved. Even though she enjoyed, even though she enjoyed being on the ZBA, she was relieved of of having that particular duty.
So that would also mean that Bob Walsh would be leaving the advisory.
Can you say more?
Not necessarily.
Well, has he decided to stay on all of them? Because there's been rumors that he was going to leave the road advisory committee so he could fulfill. Because the planning commission is a big job and then he's on the ZBA, which is also pretty.
So we'll know, we'll need to know that by twelve twelve, right? Because that's when we put that one off.
Right.
Okay, so you're you're saying we put off Bob Walsh until twelve twelve.
I I'm gonna be moving all three of the next ones and hoping there's a second and a positive vote. And then I'll be in support of an expansion to nine at 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 the future date. When when our township attorney can 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 ready that for us. So so I I'm I'm gonna be the opposite of. Postponing any of these. I think they're all.
What you're saying, regardless of the implications for RAC.
Well.
I mean, I mean, you want to move forward tonight on the.
I want to move forward tonight on these. If Bob Walsh doesn't want to know, if Bob Walsh does or doesn't want to serve on RAC.
He'll make that decision.
Hold that in a a month. I got two, two weeks.
It's not the same as the Compensation Commission where there's a, a staggering problem. It's just a workload kind of thing.
I understand.
Okay.
I read statute.
So and and so I would um move.
John, could we take these one by one, though?
Yes, of course.
Clarity at which seats they're filling.
Right now.
I I move that Bob Walsh be appointed to a two-year term on the planning commission.
I'll second that.
Is Bob okay with a two-year term?
Yes.
If even if he's not, he can't have a three-year term before trying to go to the stagger.
Well, maybe he wants a one-year term.
I mean, that's what, are you interviewing?
When we, when we get to the next. See that it aligns with his appointment to the ZBA. It's a two-year term. And that is helping to reestablish staggering on the ZBA. As I said, a lot of work went into all of these appointments. So can we vote? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, the next up is Andrea Rothney. Um and she is a newcomer to serving on boards, so we don't have that kind of.
Has anyone here met her?
Well, Jan has, and I think Jan is participating uh remotely at this point, if you would like to have Jan's input. Um I did.
I said it to Dan earlier today.
I have had some communication with Andrea and I have worked closely on her application materials. I think she may be. Strong asset uh planning commission and Jan recommended her highly. If you would like to hear directly from Jan, you can, you you have that option.
And and I just want to say again, all the applicants. Look good. Um I just don't know of Andrea's involvement at all.
I just don't like that. And so we're blindly opposed or.
Jan? Hi, Jan. I don't know if you're available. Will ask if you could join.
Yeah, I I am, can you hear me?
Hi, Jan, thank you.
So so Jan, we're we're going one by one through the planning commission appointments. Um we've appointed you, Kim, Bob, and Bob Walsh, but now we're considering Andrea Rothney. And the question arose um about your interview, your your conversation with her, if you would like this. Share anything with us that would help the the board members to move forward with this, that would be great.
Okay, sure, just a second. I'm pulling up my notes too. Um, all right, so um, yes, so. And Andrea is um uh one of the things, I guess my criteria were um. Really looking at their commitment. Um I went through e- sort of what the the commitment is to planning commission. Um the idea of um respect and collaboration. We have differing points of views, but we. Um respect that uh each other and also our uh consultants. Um and then also, um there's some um. You know, i- just in our training about um having the diversity, geographic diversity. And one of the things that uh Andrea brings is uh she's a co-housing resident. Um and also um she has both a real estate and education background. Um a little bit newer to the township um than most of the people serving. And um. It, you know, just uh in discussing um, you know, issues and so forth with her, I just got an idea that. She would be um, she has time to commit. Um she's very intelligent and knows real estate. As well as um uh really wanting to serve the township um now that she's been here for, I think it's three years.
Thank you, Jan.
You're welcome.
Further discussion. So are we ready to move forward with the vote on Andrea Rothney? Someone, John, you said you were gonna make these motions.
Yeah, I would uh. I I move that the uh we appoint Andrea Rothney. For a one-year term on the planning commission commencing November twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three.
I'll second that. Are you ready to vote? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
No. We'll call.
Oh, we all have to.
I've requested it since I heard it, no.
Okay.
I I I mean, that's what we.
Okay, go, 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 go for it, go for it.
Um Palmer?
Yes.
Blentoff, yes. Carrie?
No.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Motion adopted.
That brings us to Ryan Yapple. Ryan um is a familiar person and actually is present here, so if you have questions for him, you can ask him directly. But um Ryan is uh serving on the ZBA board and has also been uh regular. And he had many other boards and commissions and. Active participant, served on the Fire Services Guidance Committee and is a business owner. So uh in fact, um went through the planning process not too long ago in order to. Have a a new building for his business uh constructed on Jackson Boulevard and um. I uh was very pleased to see uh Ryan's application to serve on the planning commission. The idea, I should explain um with the uh the sort of newest people. Um having shorter terms, uh in particular Andrea and Brian, um something I've talked about with Jan. Um that that gives um them a chance to sort of see what it's like to be on the planning commission. And whether that's something that they really want to do without having a three-year commitment. But also it gives them a chance to sort of show that they're serious about it, that they're showing up, that they're um seeking out the uh. Training that's available for new members of a planning commission, because it is sort of a different thing to be on a planning commission. Um so that's um the introduction for Ryan that I would offer.
I just want to say, I I work with Ryan on the Fire Services Guidance Committee. Um he has an outstanding understanding of the. Infrastructure needs that the township has and would ask the planning commission. Consider um in terms of the gaps for fire, though the planning commission is explicitly not responsible for the township's capital planning. They are responsible for um guiding the planning of all of the private development that drives up. The um need for better fire services. So I know he has a good understanding of that. Also appreciate he's a business owner. Um the EWF building looks amazing. And I also know that he will bring constructive. And specific feedback from a business owner perspective about what it's like to go through our process and how we can improve it.
And and to that end, I would have moved to appoint Ryan Yapple. We could start more discussion. I just want to get on the floor if I could.
Okay.
I move to appoint Ryan Yapple to a one-year term on the planning commission commencing November twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three.
And I will second that.
Yeah, and I do feel comfortable. Voting for Ryan because he has been involved and he has shown up and he's attended many different types of meetings. Not just a um part of that, but yeah.
On with that, um all those in favor, uh say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, I'm gonna continue this agenda. That brings us to item K seven. This is the zoning board of appeals appointments and um as was previously discussed. Uh there is a connection, uh at least one connection between these and the planning commission um appointments. Um so um with that in place, um.
Can I just give a little background?
Well, um I wanted to explain a little bit more before we get to that. So there isn't an an effort to reestablish some of. Um of the staggering that uh like with the planning commission, it's sort of gotten lost over time. Um but we also um have um an opportunity to um move trustee Noel. Into a full zoning board of appeals position with this slate of 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 appointments. Um so trustee Noel has been serving as alternate and she would be a full member of the ZBA for regular. But Plenta.
Yeah, I just um wanted to actually ask a question of Mariah. So the member of the board. Is it accurate to say that the member of the board may serve as either an alternate or as a regular member? Yes, okay. And then um trustee Noel's term would follow her term as trustee, would end on eleven twenty twenty-four.
That's what it says in the motion.
That's a good question. Let me just look at that while you're.
Yeah, I think that's correct, but I want to verify that. The eleven, um the board for the ZBA, the board appointment. Um the term is her trustee term, but we'll have Mariah there.
Oh, okay.
Well, that's what's in the motion. That's the sort of the assumption with all border um representative appointments.
Yeah, it's different for some, though. Like when we went through it, like LPC, it's one year, others, it's different, so.
But at this point, it's pretty much eleven twenty twenty-four.
Jessica, I wanted to correct something you said earlier about CBA. Okay, um CBA isn't compensated.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did say that and that was wrong. The ZBA is not compensated. The PC and the Board of Review that are compensated.
Oh, I thought the CBA was. No, all right.
Um so. Jessica, if your question is, does the term end when the board term ends, I believe the answer is yes. I thought your question was. Can the board member serve as a regular member or only as an alternate? Is that not?
That was my my first question. I was confirming that the member of the board could serve as either a regular member or as an alternate.
I think so, but let me, it might take me a little longer than you were.
Yeah, and that's fine. We don't need to know that right now because we know that she can serve as a regular member.
Or you were. So I was, yeah, yeah, but we're proposing that you be a regular member, yes.
And is, I thought that Diana, um Rami's name was spelled with one end. But I just want to make sure we have it correct for the record tonight, though. Is it two ends?
Yeah, it's M.
No, the first name, Diana.
Oh, Diana, I'm sorry. I was looking the wrong part of her name.
Is it not with one end?
I think it's two.
Let's see.
It's not, no. I remember.
Yeah, I've always seen it with one end. I just want to correct it for our motion tonight.
I think you're right. I think I I added an N somehow.
Okay.
So yes, let's correct that in both places that it appears in the motion.
One N.
One N in Diana.
Is it on the website?
That's where I put this from.
It's on her website.
These are consistent.
Um I just want to thank everybody on the ZBA for their work from all accounts. It goes really, really smoothly. Um so thank you. Um and I know Tom, Diana, um. And and Bob Walsh all do a really good job um with it. I'm sure Jerry does as well. I think he's been doing this for. I don't know how many decades. Don't know, um but a long time, so thank you.
General, it's a very well-functioning group.
That's, that's what I heard.
It's been a pleasure to serve without the actual, it's been very positive.
So Mariah, what I've seen um is in section two point O, membership and term items. To township board representation, one member of the ZBA may be a current member of the SIO Township Board of Trustees. It doesn't say alternate or.
So I'm looking at the statute.
Okay.
Um subject to subsection two, one regular or alternate member of a ZBA Board of Appeals may be a member of the legislative body. So she could be regular or.
Okay, thank you.
But she cannot be the chairperson. Thank you.
All right, can we do the, can we do this as a single model motion to reappoint Tom Oth, Diana with one N, Ramey. Um to the zoning board of appeals and Jerry Kengas as alternate for three-year terms commencing on the end dates of their current terms as follows. Tom Oth, one thirty-one twenty-four, Diana Ramey, twelve eight twenty-three, Jerry Kengas, alternate, twelve twenty-eight twenty-three. Tom Oth, one thirty-one twenty-four, Diana Remy, twelve eight twenty-three, Jerry Kangas, alternate, twelve twenty-eight twenty-three. And to reappoint Robert Walsh concurrent with his appointment to the planning commission for a two-year term commencing on eleven twenty-eight twenty-three. And to change trustee Kathleen Noel from an alternate to zoning board of appeals member concurrent with her term on the board of trustees through eleven twenty twenty-four.
I would move.
Okay, and I would second.
Uh discussion?
Sure.
Um so one thing about this motion is, you know, we're, we're supposed to have terms of three years and staggered so that terms do not expire at the same time. And I appreciate that we have narrowly met that. By a matter of days in most cases, but would it not be better to have these more staggered? Then. You know, by, what do we have, sixty days across the staggering right now?
Well, you have one appointment to a two-year appointment and you have one appointment of one of these, which is Kathleen Noel.
Okay.
To a, to a one-year appointment.
So you've got three. So you've got Tom, Diana, and Jerry.
Two, two regulars and an alternate.
A two or three years.
For three-year terms.
Okay, and then the next three.
One is to a two-year term and one is to a one-year term. I think it's about as staggered as you can get with a, you know, a board of this size.
Okay.
I'm going to support this. I'm going to vote for this, but I will point out, Will. See how Tom, he expires on January thirty-first. We got twelve eight, then we got twelve twenty-eight, then eleven twenty-eight, then eleven twenty. I just think for consistency, we should try to come up with another date to make it even trickier to figure out.
But, but, but one date, this is my issue.
I know, I know, I, I'm, I'm.
Starting to.
Talking, uh, speaking in support of a, of a, a date that's.
Additization.
Yeah. I don't know what that date is, but this kind of points it out how.
It's not one hundred different dates.
Yeah.
It's, it's not that, it's not that hard. I think actually, you know, the thing that's been key, that's been crucial, the difference, is that. Um and I believe it's Mary who's doing this. Mary Gillis has been doing a very good job of keeping the record up to date on the website. It's when that, when we lost, it's when we lost track of those appointments and didn't have a record of that, that things really got off into the weeds.
Right.
I mean, it happened over a period of years, but I think that the service that Mary Gillis is providing is crucial and I want to give her credit.
I agree.
Um it's, I think it's helping us tremendously.
Now, the order of five appointments with five different dates.
Yeah, and, and so the clerk's office, Mary Gillis included, is, you know, sending the message to the board along with the administrative and finance staff who do the work. That it will be helpful if this board gets a standard date. So we can, again, defer this decision.
Uh, no, I, I, I'm.
But you're feeling it, Don?
I, what's that?
You're feeling it? Understand the issue?
I've felt it before, but I, this just drives it home.
It really does.
Um what about if, could Joyce work with you, Will, and kind of maybe and.
Well, that would be for a policy conversation. We can, we'll hammer it out then. Yeah, and then fix these in twenty twenty-six. Which is fun.
Well, I mean.
So I, I support the motion. I, I support the motion in the second.
What about, what about, what about just changing Tom Oth and Diana Remy to twelve twenty-eight twenty-three? Then they're all on the same day. Diana's, Diana's term is already, I mean, you know, it's, it's.
I, we, we can, what, whatever you want, Will. I mean, it's. I, I think, I think the solution is more um.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I meant eleven twenty-eight, making them all today.
I, I agree with, I mean, I agree with Jessica, like, let, let, I think, I think we should. I, I'm, I'm okay approving these today, but then we need to kind of, we need to fix, yeah, yeah, we need to kind of fix it up. When it's not ten o'clock at night, we've thought about what might work best for staff a- after we.
And the board, I mean, for all of us.
No, I know, but.
Well, maybe in the motion add something that um their terms of the dates or whatever will be changed.
No, I, we, we can't change them. We'll have to address it through policy and then prospectively.
All right, well, then, uh, what, let's vote if we haven't already. We haven't. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Or opposed?
Okay.
This brings us to item K nine, which is Parks Preserves and Pathways Appointments. The model motion is to approve the reappointment of Liz Wiseman and Roy Townsend for three-year terms of the Parks Preserves and Pathways Committee as follows. Liz Wiseman commencing twelve eight twenty-three and concurrent with her service on the Land Preservation Commission. Roy Townsend commencing twelve eight twenty-three and to appoint John Riser as the Board of Trustees representative to the Park Preserves and Pathways Committee. As full voting member for a term concurrent with his term on the Board of Trustees.
We have discussion before we fly into a motion.
Yeah, I, yeah, I, I want to talk about it too. And first is, um is someone leaving?
Right.
So, because right now I go, because Anna wants me to go kind of as a liaison.
And it's a service.
And I don't vote, this works.
Chris Cheng is the PC representative to the Parks Preserves and Pathways Committee. He can no longer serve as a member. He may be serving as a staff member working with the committee, but not as a, a member of the committee.
So page two of the chart has the seats to the best of my ability for parks. And so I just want to match up, Will, where these names. Um where these names match up. So Will, in. And, and first I want to say too, I checked in with Anna Cohn. She supports these. So Will, so you're proposing that the seat of resident and planning commission member be John Riser?
Yes.
Okay.
John would be serving on the planning commission and on this Parks Preserves and Pathways Committee.
Okay, so it would be concurrent with his term on the PC.
Which is the same as, is concurrent, is concurrent with his term on the board.
Absolutely. I know, I'm just trying to make sure we've got him in the right seat. Um because it's a, yeah, anyways, um and then Liz um would be the resident and LTC member. Okay, I'm just filling in the chart here, Will.
And Roy Townsend would just be serving as a member of the Parks Preserves and Pathways.
And so Roy. So that one. The one seat was he in that made it expire on twelve eight? Was he on RAC?
So he was on RAC.
Yeah, that we.
So the resident, uh, and, and just to be clear, this resident and RAC member is the seat he was in.
Well, actually, I guess you could look at it that way. The seat that he was in on RAC was as a Parks Preserves and Pathways.
So I, I actually, I, I re-reviewed the committee charge for parks. So we are supposed to have nine residents of the township as voting members. It is desirable, but not required, desirable. Have a member of the board, member of the PC, member of RAC, and member of LPC. So it's certainly not required that he be on RAC?
Correct.
Okay, so it's just a seat.
It's just a seat.
And that's Roy Townsend.
And that's Roy Townsend.
Okay. So my, my goal is, everybody, that, you know, we keep building our defined seats and names next to them.
Yeah, we build all that grid.
To the degree possible. And in some cases, it's required. In some cases, it's just desired.
Right.
In this case, um the motion sort of identifies where, what role people are specifically being. Put forward to fill.
Okay.
And it's a, it's a nice coincidence that John is currently serving on the planning commission. But he's, but he's the board rep to the Parks Preserves and Pathways.
Exactly, and, and I appreciate you doing that, John. I, I will say, though, um there's no need to constrain. Liz or John's terms to be concurrent with their service on LPC and BOT slash PC respectively. Because these seats, the parks charge says we just need nine residents of the township. They are all residents. It is desirable, not required, that a member of the board, member of planning, rep, and LPC. And I remember when Jim Fink, in his wisdom. Um was helping us with this revised committee charge. He said, why don't you just make it desirable instead of recommended? So you don't get hung up. Like, instead of required. And, and that's the wisdom in it. So again, these are all resident seats. It's.
Are going to be in seven years?
It's a bonus. And, and the charge says that terms shall be two or three years to be staggered. It says the terms of members who are also on the other committees could be the length of those terms. So there's sort of some conflicting language, but the truth is, it's nine residents. And so we don't need to make any of these terms artificially short. You could make them the full two or three years, Will. Any one of us could.
Well, these are all being put forward for three-year terms and in fact. With, when you look at the full picture of all the appointees to the Parks Preserves and Pathways Committee, there is staggered, there are staggered terms. These are, okay. Ready to vote?
I am.
So all those in favor say aye. Aye, or opposed? Okay. Well, that brings us, with all of the items removed, to item K twelve. This is a discussion-only item. Currently, the Board of Trustees has no written policy nor does the clerk. Well, actually, I'll let you introduce this, Jessica, it's your.
Okay, great. So this is for discussion only tonight, um a brief discussion, which we will need to um continue. But again, um most legislative bodies have some sort of policy or protocol. Looked at a few drafted up something that. Eighty percent of what's in this proposed policy is what we do by practice. But the pieces of it that we've been missing is consistency across committees. And also participation of the whole board, making sure the whole board has the information they need. Um the supervisor appoints to the Compensation Commission, the Planning Commission, the DDA. But any member of the board appoints uh may nominate um to the others. And so what's, what's in here sort of memorializes what we do already and then hopefully adds some improvements like better communication. To and from the, the nominating authority when somebody resigns, to and from the applicants when they are either approved or not approved. Right now, we handle it, but there's protocol in here. And you'll see there's also some. Um discipline built into this for the board that up to a hundred and twenty days before. Um we would notice everybody, hey, your terms expired. You want to reapply, you know, get a sense of it. Up to ninety days before, we will advertise. Um so when you look at this proposed policy alongside this, what you see is, is kind of a, you know, we're doing better. Than we did before, but we have, I think we're about, you know, at about thirty percent of where we need to be with this process. And we have a lot of um expirations coming up. Like, for example, the next one. Um in addition to the ones we didn't handle tonight is the Compensation Commission, right? We have a seat expiring five days ago. The statute says we have to fill it within thirty. That means on December twelfth. We'll, we'll appoint somebody subject to confirmation by majority of the board. Um to be in compliance with the statute. We haven't advertised, we haven't talked about it, but that will be happening at our December twelfth meeting. So I'm driving home the importance of getting ahead of this and advertising. Um I also want to know, Will, if I could ask for your help on the DDA, the records aren't clear as to which current member holds each seat. I know they probably do line up, but in terms of which ones actually hold an interest, they're business owners, which person was there. Um so some help with the record-keeping would be great. Um my, my suggestion for this um is that we really have a conversation about this. And I think because it goes to kind of. Questions about, you know, should we publish applications or should we just have applications available? That's a good discussion to have. How we notice the community, it's all good discussion to have. Um I would actually recommend that we have a work session on this. Um and I know we need more, more process on this. I don't know how long this will take, hopefully not too long. But I would um make a motion to call for a special meeting on Tuesday, December twelfth at six P M, the hour before a regular meeting. To be a discussion-only work session for the purpose of deliberating on proposed policy to standardize process to appoint members to township committees.
Do we have to do it this month, this coming month? It's not December yet. Do we have to do it that soon? Can we move it over a month?
We, we can do whatever we want to do. I'm just saying, um I think it's important. It's timely. This is, these issues are fresh. We're going to be dealing with these same questions of many end dates. So I think it behooves us to do it sooner than later, but we're not required, Donna.
I, I think. I would like some time to sort of look at this. I mean, I, I, I appreciate the work that you put into this. I think this, you know, it can help the township. To have some clarity about the appointments process. And I think it's, um, you know, it's building on the work that I was just. Celebrating that Mary does in terms of keeping everything in order on the website. I think that's a wonderful tool. Um the, um, I mean, you know, it, it just sort of. Spring, you know, forward, it kind of fully formed and I didn't have time to really process it.
Absolutely. That's why I'd like, I made the motion to call for a special meeting on Tuesday, December twelfth, six P M.
I just wondered, I just wondered why, why rushing it forward for.
It's, it's just have an hour discussion about it.
So, so let me, let me, um. You, uh, you want to have a special meeting to talk about A twelve?
Yeah, well, to talk about the policy that is.
A twelve.
That is.
And, 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 and the.
That's an attachment. That's just supposed to be a reference.
Yeah, we're talking about these, right?
Yeah.
Um why couldn't it be a? If we're going to do it, why couldn't we vote on it too? Why, why, why discussion only?
I was trying to give people space to think. I mean, sometimes, sometimes people feel better having a contained period of time. Where we just have discussion only, where they don't have to feel worried about making decisions.
Is it likely to change between now and then?
Well, I would welcome everybody's input, first of all, and then I would welcome every.
Likely to change it.
Yeah, yeah, there's going to be lots of changes.
That's funny.
Joyce is likely to change it.
Joyce will have changes. Will will have changes. Everybody.
I may, I don't know. I have any.
We don't have to spend an hour on it, Will. It's not going to be a two-hour discussion.
And that's why I thought we have discussion gap this today.
No, I know, but my, no, but my point is if we do it on twelve twelve from six to seven, we got to be done by seven because we got a regular meeting. Can't get bogged down too long, so.
And it's a discussion. It gives, it gives folks two weeks to read two pages um to provide, I'm just breaking it down, breaking it down. And, and, and provide and tear it up, red lines, tear it up, but bring other examples, tear it up.
Jessica, I'm not going to vote against a special meeting, but I will ask. Uh Mariah and Joyce whether they have enough time to do what they need to do to get it out before next. One Thursday at five o'clock for the packet, the packet, because it, we, we got to have our product done by now.
Oh, I was, I was, and it, it, that's a burden on you guys. We can move it back. I was honestly thinking everybody would just bring their ideas and we'd talk about it, but if, if you guys want to. Redraft something, then it's on your timeline.
I'd rather talk about what's been vetted by legal and, 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 and Joyce.
Okay, so whatever time Joyce and Mariah need.
So I guess, uh, what about the first meeting in January? Is that a good time?
I would, I, I'm fine with that, Joyce. I think we should dedicate a special time to it because our meetings are so.
Yeah, a special meeting like, you know, a study session.
Yeah, like a work session.
What you're proposing.
So an hour-long session to precede the regu, the first regular meeting in January.
In January.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. Let's do, let's, let's, let's do that.
I.
So the discussion.
I support your motion. I support your motion.
What's what's the date in January? And again, at least my goal with a policy is to keep it, keep it lean and not overly prescriptive for staff.
Those January ninth?
So yeah.
January ninth would be the first regular meeting in January.
So I'd I'd make, I'd revise my motion to be a motion to call for a special meeting on Tuesday, January ninth, six P M. To be a discussion only work session for the purpose of deliberating. On proposed policy to standardize process to appoint members to township committees. Is that comfortable for Brian Joyce?
So moved by Flintop, support by Hathaway. All those in favor say aye, aye, those opposed? More say?
No, I'm I'm supportive.
Okay, that's what I thought. See there now.
Hallelujah.
All right, so um, are, is that enough discussion for K twelve for tonight?
For me.
Okay, so, all right, let's, let's move on then. A thirteen, this is the proposed add-on item authorization for an administrative review. And I found, is this from you, Jessica?
Um, yeah, and I I brought this uh, to the table tonight. Um, after um, you know, some consideration, um, discussion with the manager, county attorney. Um, given uh, that there were some questions over the last uh, week or so. Um, I thought it would be in the best interest of the township to have a lean administrative review. Um, of the causes of how on November fifteenth, there was an email message. In a calendar and uh, invitation sent from a township account um, without the township users' knowledge.
What agenda item is this? I want to make sure I have.
Yeah, it's a handout.
The handout that was added.
Yeah, I thought it was K thirteen.
I'm sorry, I thought I distributed it.
Need some over there too?
And so I thought that, you know, in in an effort to get um, clarity, um, resolution. Um, as a township, I wanted to offer this motion uh, to authorize the manager. To conduct an administrative review of the causes of how on November fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. The clerk received one email message from the account W Hathaway at Scioto Township dot org. And the planning coordinator received one calendar invitation from the account W Hathaway at Scioto Township dot org. Without the supervisor having knowledge of having sent these. The administrative review may also include recommendations to the township regarding procedures and policies to prevent such events in the future. To carry out this administrative review, in addition to the internal resources of the I T director and township attorney. The managers authorized to engage with other I T or other professional services as necessary. And an amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars to be budgeted from the general fund fund balance. And last, uh, to ask that the administrative review be reported to the Board of Trustees by not later than January third and first. My motion.
So, um, Joyce, uh, this is the first I've seen this, is this, have you had a chance to sort of process this?
Yes, I I did uh, have an opportunity to speak with um, the township clerk. And um, it is something that we can pursue if the board is interested in doing so.
There's a.
I'm definitely, oh, I'll second the motion. I I'm definitely interested in doing so. I I want to know what's going on.
I think, I think we all do. Um, yes. So, so um, I would support this if if Joyce, if you're game, I guess. I mean, it seems like some of this is already going on. I know I, uh, Chris Bailey has been trying to figure it out. And has done some work already.
Mm-hmm, yeah, and I know Chris has has done some of, some of the work already. And that certainly can be part of the process, but it allows for um, a second set of eyes to look at the issue. And even provide recommendations. We're working on policies too to make some changes, so it might be beneficial in that regard. And help us to get to some closure, you know, more quickly.
Concerned that this could drag out. And I guess. Let me just ask you, Will. Why did you contact the county sheriff rather than first work with our I T director? And Joyce?
Well, actually, I first worked with our I T director, Joyce. And concluded that there was a need for. Other resources to to be brought to bear to investigate. And that's what I initiated with the report to sheriff. So um, this, I think, can work together with that. Um, but we can't, you know, sort of intercede in the sheriff investigation with this administrative review. But I think, you know, this is, you know, com- could be complimentary to that. And we hopefully will get some information from that investigation as well.
Did you talk to anybody else besides Chris and Joyce when this you you first became aware of this?
Talked to anybody else? Well, see, the first person I communicated with about it, I guess, was Jessica. Because Jessica sent me an email asking me what forwarded email, you know, what. To explain it, basically. And so that's the initial dialogue. And um, everyone on the board was included and actually Mariah and I think were also included on that communication. So I think a lot of communications sort of got initiated with that email exchange. I talked with um, Ian Hubert, um, who had um. Tried to assist with figuring out what went wrong and to, and actually took a step or two to try and. Correct it as far as he could see. Um, and in in fact, um, his information helped to inform um, the effort that Chris was undertaking. To try and uh, understand it. So each of those conversations or communications sort of, you know, moved the process forward.
Guess I want to know, what did you say to the sheriff?
I think, I think that that, I'm sorry to cut you off, but I think, I think that that's part of what the. This motion is about is that is to have a process, place to ask those questions.
I'm worried. I don't, I think that would be outside of the scope of this. And I, I mean, I defer to Joyce, but that's not what I, oh, that's, that's what I, that's what I thought was part of the. I not, not what did Will say to the sheriff is outside of the scope. Administrative review, I'm sorry, but my intention on the administrative review was um, for the township. To do its administrative review of how um, two items were sent internally. Without the account owner, Will being aware of it.
Yes, but I think that that's part of the, that what happened next is part of the information that would be needed to go forward, right?
I think, I think that.
Well, I I think what.
I I trust you. I'm just not quite.
Yeah, I think what she's referring to is part of that review process, everything's gonna be reviewed. And there's gonna be a lot of discussion and maybe interviews with a number of people.
That would make sense.
You and the technology.
That makes sense.
So I guess, I'm not gonna oppose this, but I I don't know that we need this motion. Because from what I understand, an administrative review is going on. Isn't that correct? Or no, am I wrong on that?
I think as far as having kind of an independent process, that's not taking place. I know that Chris is, he's doing.
Outside I T.
Yeah, it's outside, it's outside.
Because just just for the record, back in August twenty ninth, I sent Chris and Anna and. Uh, who else? Uh, I sent it to to Anna, Chris, Bailey, Christie Akin, Roy Townsend, Rita Clintorne and Jessica Flintoff. I sent an email because I had to host a P P, uh, uh, PPP Zoom and I didn't know what the heck I was doing. And I was worried about doing it right. And I say, thanks, Chris. Would love to meet with you ahead of time to develop a one-page cheat sheet on how to host a Zoom meeting, which would include. What log on to use? Is there a special one for hosting Zoom meetings or do we use our Scioto Township log on? I said, uh, how how to log on to Zoom and start the meeting, how to admit people, how to promote someone to a panelist or allow them to share a screen. How to s- uh, start and stop the recording, how to know when someone has raised their hand and to call on them during public comment and public hearings. How to go into closed session and return from closed session, how to toggle between the different cameras in the meeting room, what, who to call, what number? If there are any technical issues, and then how to appropriately end a Zoom meeting and properly log off. So I sent that to uh, August twenty, uh, August twenty ninth, because I, because, you know, I I I didn't know what I was doing up there when I was.
And and John.
Chitting, yeah, so so so.
Totally legit, but I don't.
And I followed up with Chris and I know that he is going to be coming up. He he's, he's followed up. And said that they're working on this. And part of what, part of what's gonna be developed is the lessons that they've learned from what happened a couple of weeks ago, I think.
I would think so too, John. And I'm with you on the Zoom instruction. I will just say, you know, we, Chris has done a great job. We're so lucky to have him, you know, and he has shared the report with the board about the the quirky. Um, technological thing he thinks happened, but I also don't want to assume what device it was, right? And so I just, when you're talking about Zoom, you're talking about this computer behind me. And I just want to say, you know, we we don't know. We need the whole, we need the whole review. And I think what this does, the reason I brought this motion to the board, is because we're talking about the township supervisor's. Email account. Um, you've acknowledged that the township supervisor has filed a police report on this. For the comfort and protection of our, you know, I want the manager and I T director and our attorney. To know that they have the full board backing to do an administrative review. Try to just kind of get to the bottom of what happened and give recommendations to the township to present, prevent such an event or confusion in the future.
And that's all reasonable. I guess what I'm trying to get at is. I'm lacking information and I think that. You should give the township, the board, more information on what happened.
Well, what you reported is.
And that is.
Oh, well, I'm not sure that um. It helps to go into all of the details in a public forum. Um, I I think it may help to uh, do an investigation with assistance from someone who has technical expertise. Because I think those are the kinds of questions that we need answers to, if we're gonna really understand what happened.
We need answers to those questions, but I guess. We're working with you. We're trying to work with you and we need to know why you did this.
Oh, why I did what?
By the police report. What potential crime? I mean, and I'm not asking you to answer right now. I will just share, it is, it is puzzling to me. That it's not relatively apparent to me, given the the facts that I'm aware of. But I do think that is separate and I want to keep it separate from the administrative review we now need to do.
I want to ask both of you, what would you have done if you're, all of a sudden your terminals were compromised?
I don't even know what. I would have talked to Chris in detail.
Did that too.
I would have asked him his opinion on it. I would probably have asked him to write a report. Yes, he did. But the report came later. We'll file the police report before we had the I T report. From Chris. And I also would have talked to Joyce to find out, you know, what's going on. I mean, I do sometimes call her and ask her what's going on with different issues. And I would have tried to understand what happened here.
Well, all of, all of those conversations happened, like several times with Joyce, several times with Chris. The content of his written report, I already, that was, those were all things that I had talked about with Chris. So it's, I had some advance information before he wrote it up and it was able to be shared out. So I I, you know, I had that, I benefited from those conversations before you, the rest of you were.
Did you give that report to the sheriff?
I offered it to the sheriff. Um, the sheriff had already received it from you. Um, so um, you you anticipated his um, desire for it before me.
Can I, can I share a little, answer your question a little bit? Because I think it's a good question about what should we do, what's a reasonable thing to do? And and I I will just say, I know from, you know, using email and moving too fast. I've definitely had things, been logged in to save multiple machines. I've had something in my outbox that doesn't go. I'm rushing around. I start doing something else. A year later, it sets. Six months later, it sets. Somebody says, Jessica, why'd you send that to me? And I said, I didn't send you any mail. And then I say, except I did, right? And so it's, it there, it's most typically a quirky technological thing. Another story. And and then the other thing I want to say is, in this experience, I reported in full and public to the board about a year and a half ago. Because I thought it was important. David Rowley and I provided a report on it. The one time I'm aware of that this township in Donahue, remember this well, the spear phishing scheme. The one time where it was a spear phishing scheme to our finance manager's email. The person who does payroll masked as an employee of ours requesting a change to her direct deposit for her paycheck. Using our internal form and and all of this stuff. So that had, and and we lost money. It was under two thousand dollars. Um, we had a full I T review. Donna contacted the bank. We filed a police report. We contacted our insurance company. Um, we reported it to the board. The employees involved wrote a report up in their personnel file. To have it as a record of what happened, because there was no wrongdoing on employees' part. We changed our policies.
Therefore with that, but I.
And and so what what I'll say with that situation, that was somebody come come posing. As a township employee for money. That was clearly, you know, some malicious intent there. And so I just share that as an experience of how we've handled, you know, something with malicious intent from the facts I know. And again, we need a full administrative review. It it appears that um, I I just want, want the public to know. There there was not a big email hack. There haven't been a hundred emails sent on behalf of the township. There was one calendar invitation and one email sent internally to our knowledge. Um, there hasn't been a big scheme or scam or any harm done to the township, to my knowledge. That said, it's an issue and I do um, again, uh, recommend this authorization for an administrative review.
Are we ready to vote? Okay, all those in favor say aye, aye. Those opposed? All right, the administrative review is approved.
Thank you, Joyce, for doing this. Andy, Chris, and anybody else.
Spend all the money, you don't have. Just want me to run that on?
I got it, John. That's okay. Thank you.
All right, that does, I think, bring us to. Public comment. This is time for members of the public to speak for up to three minutes on any matter under the purview of order. John, may I turn to you at certain?
Yeah, yeah, I don't want to drop the gun on it though.
Thank you.
As I'm the only one uh, resident in Township Hall. Pam Boyd, an active and informed SiO resident, and I'm now calling myself an expert witness. Wow, you're sheriff, huh? Um, so on that topic, my husband frequently attends, um, online set of teaching sessions that update on issues of uh, fraud on the internet, and it's getting really, really bad. And it's, it's really, I, Jess, I appreciate you bringing up the administrative review because I think that's a good baseline, um, to go forward. Treasurer Palmer, I loved your timely treasurer's report tonight. Um, but while I have the decoder ring to read your report, I don't think other residents have a way to read a report written in invisible ink. Um, you know, it's, it's really been a long time since you've had a report, and I know you guys are doing something there, and we residents would like to share in the good rooms of the treasurer, the treasurer's office in a more timely fashion, please. Um, all right, recently, my attention in Syo has a new red flag. I've noticed that at least one of the utility trucks looks a bit like a rust bucket. It also, is it a safety hazard too? Um, has Syo been setting aside, um, funds to replace the, the utility vehicles in, in a timely fashion? Or has it been like our fire station three years ago? Um, and funds have not been set aside to replace. Um, I really hope this board is making sure that our utilities department is driving vehicles that Syo is proud of and that are safe. Um, and as far as the planning commission, being the expert witness here, there have been so many times when there haven't been enough people, there've been your basic uh, numbers on the planning commission, but they've had a lot of absences. Now, granted, there are vacations and such, but I really think as a resident, looking at this meeting, it's very, very important to have alternatives, to be able to have a full set of seven all the time so that you can rotate out, um, vacations, because there's so much learning that goes involved in the planning commission that, um, you need to have extra to cushion those who aren't there. And it's, 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 it's been problematic, um, uh, thank you.
Is there anyone participating remotely who would like to speak during public?
If so, please raise your Zoom hand. First up.
Wait.
I'm going to give John a minute, I'm going to give John three minutes. Um, first up is Paula's iPhone, next up Jonathan Greenberg, Paula?
Yeah, uh, good evening. I, I just want to let you know that I was watching the, um, DDA meeting about a week or whatever it was ago um, on the recording, I didn't watch it live, and, you know, I found it interesting, they want us, the, the, I, I don't know if it's out of the general fund, but us to pay for Dino Drive. Uh, Hathaway was there, so he can inform everyone too. And they want us to pay, you know, use our tree fund, and then they, then it was like, oh, they, they didn't realize they got all this money put into their account from the Lithia transaction, well, how, how much ever they get from that. And then I thought, well, why, if, if the board isn't initiating these things, and it's supposed to be the DDA, why isn't the DDA ponying up the money, especially when they talk about taking $3 million and depositing, which is a smart thing to do, into a, a higher paying, uh, interest rate? But, uh, talking of security, I don't know if it was Sandy Agler or if it was, uh, what's her name that's on rack? But then they were reading off the account number of their account. And then nobody knew where, where this money was going, and Sandy Agler goes, oh, I have to, I, I suggest you all watch that, I think it was closer to the end. But I, I question, what does the DDA do? Yeah, they talk about doing a couple more, um, yeah, they put the trees in in August, and then they had to pay to water them. And maybe they should have talked to a horticulturist, plant them in the fall, luckily, we had quite a bit of rain in August. And I go, what's the purpose of the DDA anymore, other than collecting a lot of money? And that, that's a, I think a lot of residents would be interested in that, I mean, and I, I have to feign some, say, uh, I have some ignorance on, yes, when they put the road in and that, but if they're turning around and asking the board to pay for things, I go, what does the DDA do? And, uh, that's, that's my comment about the DDA meeting. Anyway, have a good night. Oh, and I'll give some feedback on, uh, I don't think it's the board's responsibility with the fire millage, first off, I thought it was great, you all did a millage to allow people to vote on it. And, um, I think what would be a good idea is maybe, uh, have some type of, uh, questionnaire and let the public tell you why, because I talked to people in grocery lines or Menards, I go, oh, you live in Syo, how do you feel about this or that, and maybe we'd get some good feedback, I, I have some feedback, but I have my three minutes, so. But, um.
Thank you.
I have a lot of questions about the DDA, yep.
Thanks, Paula.
Thanks, Paula. Next up is Jonathan Greenberg, followed by Rob Pattinson, Jonathan?
Ain't it great, it's not 1:30 in the morning? I think it is, um, appreciate the improvements in the, uh, much better, well-run meetings, uh, just want to talk briefly about email. Um, back in 89 and 90, I was building email networks over at the University of Michigan Medical Center, um, and have been involved heavily in technical uh, networking and email issues ever since, including serving on the healthcare security team for over 12 years. Uh, I know a little bit about this subject. This whole thing is just nonsense, I mean, I get it, the petty games that Will plays and calling the sheriff must have been a real fun one for him. But, uh, this is a waste of everyone's time, including the sheriffs. Uh, you look at the report that the, that your new IT guy wrote, pretty much said it was a nothing burger. I can take the time now and bore you with a lot of technical details as to what probably happened. Um, but, uh, it, it just, it's just remarkable to me, the amount of energy that this uh, board is wasting on this because of a juvenile attack on another member of the BOT. Seems to happen a lot with that particular supervisor, specifically women. He really does have a problem, and whenever he gets a chance, he'll take a jab at them. Anyone that doesn't agree with him, especially women who are powerful, can't wait to go running to the police like the bully coward he is. It's just sad to see you people wasting your time on this. Good night, Will, just embarrassing, man, just embarrassing.
Thank you, Jonathan, next up is Rob Pattinson, Rob. Apologies, Rob, one more try here.
No worries.
Thank you, Rob Pattinson, Syo Township. First of all, I sincerely apologize to Bob Walsh. Um, the trustee appointments have been such a mess over the last few years that I forgot that he wasn't one of the appointees. Apologies to him. Um, I'm confused, uh, during the, uh, appointments section of the meeting, uh, the supervisor was rigidly, uh, against changing the date uh, during the planning commission appointments, and then a few minutes later, in the zoning board of appeal appointments, he suddenly suggested changing the dates. So that makes no sense, I don't understand the logic, clearly, there is no logic there. Um, in terms of the appointments, this board needs to take control of how appointments are made. Um, uh, item K12 tonight is part of that process, but if the supervisor has sole power over who is appointed, who is, who's nominated, who's, who gets on the list for appointments, that is absolutely ripe for corruption, because as Kathy pointed out, there were seven, uh, applicants of which four of those applicants, the rest of the board has no idea who they are, because the supervisor chose not to share them. Uh, and they only got some information after they asked for it. So, um, that process is clearly broken and, uh, needs to be remedied. Uh, during my opening comments tonight, I asked all of you not to make a fast motion uh, similar to the dirty tricks of years gone by, and I'd like you all to highlight or notice, highlight and notice that it was the supervisor himself who made the fast notion, motion to, um, to try and get the planning commission appointments through in one big lump. Thank you, Clerk Flintoff, for, uh, making the motion to break that up into individual pieces. Uh, that prevented that dirty trick from working. And then, uh, who were the seven applicants? That's a question to all of you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, I, I don't have the list in front of me, otherwise I would answer you, does somebody have that information? Uh, well, I'll tell you what, Rob, let's get through public comment and then we can do responses.
Okay, and then lastly, I do not understand this last discussion. You talked all around, whatever this issue is, about the admin review and calling the sheriff, and it makes absolutely no sense, you are clearly talking around something without talking about what it is. Would you please inform us of what exactly happened? And why was the sheriff called? Uh, that seems to me a rather significant event, and we have a right to know why the sheriff was called uh, in terms of what's going on in our Township Hall. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Um, any other interested public, please raise your Zoom hand. Okay, I see no other interested public, have a couple of brief responses, Will?
You, you have a couple?
Yep.
Please go forward.
Um, one, Paula Globerson, um, you mentioned the DDA receiving funding from suburban Lithia, I presume you're talking about the development agreement, um, community benefits, I will just state there were none that went to the DDA. No community benefit from the Lithia Development Agreement went to the DDA. Um, so I just want to clarify that. Um, and the, the second, uh, question, um, Rob, the, the purpose of the administrative review is to understand why one email was sent from W Hathaway to me, and one calendar invitation was sent from W Hathaway to Fran in our office. It's a couple of weeks ago, and Will was unaware that they had been sent. That's the administrative review.
Maybe Will should learn how to sign out of his accounts, because this is all about his.
I, I just, sorry, Jonathan, you've already had, um, your, your chance, I apologize. Um, but, but one chance. Um, Paula, I see your hand up again. Um, so unless the board would like to allow, uh, more than one comment, I think we're done.
Motion to adjourn?
Well, um, the DDA or the, um, planning commission.
Yeah.
There was a Mike or a Mark, that's Jake, yeah. Um, not sure how to say his last name, I apologize, um, Kathleen Brand, Ryan Yable.
Yeah. Andrea.
Yeah, Rastick, Nordwagner, yep, Andrea Rothstein.
I think, I think it's pronounced Yable.
It's Yable.
He said it, he corrected us a lot of times.
I thought I was corrected when I pronounced it Yable, that it was Yapple, all right.
And, and Will, who is the last one, Jillian has all the applicants, who is the last name, the other gentleman?
James Watt.
James Watt.
Not the one who used to be the Secretary of Interior. So, total of six.
Oh, um, Joyce?
Oh, I had a, just a comment on another issue.
Sure.
Before we.
Okay.
You know.
No, no, go right ahead.
Well, I just wanted to, uh, comment related to, um, Mrs. Boyd's concern about the utility department and the equipment. Um, part of what we're going to be doing as part of the budgeting process is putting together a capital improvement plan, and the trucks are part of that discussion, and that should be underway by January. You're welcome.
And actually, I can respond a little bit more to Paula Globerson, um, and her, her questions about the DDA. Um, I am, uh, we were thinking about having a DDA questions on the agenda for this meeting, thankfully, did not put them on. Um, but, um, I am working together with Bob Stites to bring, um, the DDA, um, issues to the board on December 12th. And so, um, um, if we can get our, get it together, there will be a presentation from DDA board members or a member. Um, and, um, discussion of some of those questions that Paula was mentioning, uh, from the DDA meeting. And, um, also, I, I will be happy to look at the list of DDA board members with you, Jessica.
Yeah, you can just fill in what names match which seats.
Well, okay. I'm not sure I can do all of that, but I can tell you, you know, I can answer the question about Jeff Harshing and, um, and I think they got the answer to the question about Jay Holland, those were.
Oh, okay.
Those were the two that were questioned by several people, Catherine, and others. I think Bob Pattinson.
And also a resident of the DDA.
And I think we meet all of the requirements, and all of the board members meet in one way or another, the slots, the qualifications that are necessary in order to serve. Okay, motion to adjourn. So. Okay, move by risers, support by no, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned at 10:48.
Thank you, everybody, for joining, uh, via Zoom and in person.